As the Board of Selectmen, we are running the town. It's an old joke, but it's going to get very much older because we've heard some nasty elevator news. Superintendent Bodie?
On the elevator?
Yes.
We're looking for at least another month out.
Okay, we're going to get comfortable here.
At a much more increased price, I might add, too.
What was the complication we hit?
The complication is that the code changed and we now have to be 12 feet below where we currently are to put this piston in. And they started digging and hit rock.
Mm-hmm.
So now we have to drill 12 feet through rock.
Okay.
And that's going to take a little bit longer and it's going to cost more money.
Joy, joy, joy. So I guess we'll be here for a while. This further illustrates the need for a new high school. So anybody who's friends with Deb Goldberg, call her up and tell her we need the school. The other announcement I would like to make, Mr. Thielman is en route in traffic. He will be here momentarily. Mr. Pierce has banded up, has hooked up with a band of thespians and he's performing tonight in Burlington. He is playing in a play called "Any Given Monday." We went and saw it last Sunday. It is very worthwhile seeing.
Oh, good luck.
It's a lot of fun. So this weekend it closes, so make sure if you can, get up to Burlington and go see Judd play a wonderful role that he was meant to play, the role that was written for him.
Awesome.
In any case, we're now going to public participation. Jane Biondi, you're up first. Linda Hansen will be second.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jane Biondi. I live at 50 Wyman Street. And I am here on behalf of the Arlington Education Foundation to invite the school committee and Dr. Bodie and Dr. Chesson to the Arlington Education Foundation's annual fall fundraiser. It's going to take place on next Monday, November 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Flora Restaurant. We ask for $100 donation per person or 150 for two people, although that's a suggested donation, so whatever you can give will be appreciated. And this is a very special year for us because we're celebrating 25 years, this year of working together with the district and giving grants to the district. So we're very excited about it and we would love to see you all at our 25th anniversary on November 23rd at Flora. You'll learn a little bit about some new grants that we made this past year and you'll see some old friends and eat and drink good food at Flora. So we hope to see you there. Thank you.
I just want to right away send my regrets. We're out of town on Thanksgiving week, so, and you had the event last week at Thanksgiving Week 2, which is why we missed it. So it's a great event and anybody who's watching this should really get down to Flora, get to eat their food, hang out with some of the nicest people in town.
We'll raise a toast in your memory.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Linda Hansen will be followed by Tammy McBride.
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Hansen. I'm president of the Arlington Education Association. And I'm here this evening to address the recent decision of the Board of Education to support Commissioner Chester's recommendation to develop a new state test currently being called MCAS 2.0. It's noteworthy that the vote on the Board of Education was eight to three, with the board members representing parents, teachers, and students all voting against this particular initiative. But I do believe that advocacy on the part of many constituents succeeded in turning away the movement to tie our Massachusetts testing to the multi-state consortium, and I think that was a significant victory. I applaud the fact that we've managed to maintain control of our state test. I feel like Massachusetts educators and administrators will have more success influencing the content of the test with state control. I support an amendment that passed seven to four to continue the "hold harmless" clause for results based on the new test until 2018. That means that the first year of the hybrid test in 2017 will also be held under a "hold harmless" clause. This amendment was put forth by former Leslie University President Margaret McKenna, who supports the hybrid test but feels like the rush to offer it in a year and a half does not leave proper time for test development, beta testing, and setting standards. Another statistic I found interesting that I want to mention is one I saw in the Globe West section last weekend. There it was reported that at the Joint State Superintendents and State School Committee Conference, delegates took a non-binding vote in favor of the statewide moratorium on high stakes standardized testing until a better assessment system can be developed. The vote was 63 to 52 in favor of the ban. This is a conversation I hope to be able to come back to in the future. Tonight, the issue that we take up is later in the agenda, is what Arlington should do about our spring 2016 test. The choices are to stick with MCAS for a final year, try out the Park Paper and Pencil under the "hold harmless" clause, or try out Park Computer-Based, also under the "hold harmless." As the people who will be responsible for preparing students to take the test, I feel like it's critical for teacher input to be considered in this decision. I commend and appreciate the outreach from Assistant Superintendent Laura Chesson, with whom I've had several long conversations about how to approach this decision. Laura also sponsored a teacher conversation on the topic on Wednesday afternoon that we both attended. After a lengthy conversation with Laura last week and after spending a lot of time on the DESI website over the weekend, I put together a document for teachers that explained the decision before us and listed the major factors that I felt were important to weigh in making a decision. Teachers were encouraged to review the information and fill out a survey about what they would recommend for the district. In all, 58 teachers participated in the survey, and that's roughly half the teachers that are responsible for teaching the test in grades three through eight. And those were the targeted teachers that I specifically asked to take the survey. In all, about 66% chose to stick with the MCAS for another year, so 38. Fifteen teachers of 26% said try Park Paper and Pencil with the "hold harmless," and only five or nine percent said try Park with the Computer-Based with the "hold harmless." I thought that the disaggregated data would be very interesting, and I do have copies of all this information for you that Karen will be passing out afterwards. But it was interesting, so I looked at it by grade level also. Third grader, third grade teachers, 18% said try out the Park Paper and Pencil, 82% said stick with MCAS. No third grade teachers thought trying on the computer was a good idea. In grade four, 8% said Park Computer-Based, 46% Park Paper and Pencil, and 46% stick with MCAS. So a little more split there in fourth grade. In fifth grade, 9% Park Computer, 27% Park Paper and Pencil, 55% stick with MCAS. Grade three through five, special educators, there were only a few. One said try Park Paper and Pencil and two said stick with MCAS. At the middle school, 12 teachers overall responded. 67% said to stick with MCAS, 25% Park Computer-Based, and 8% Park Paper and Pencil. So another important thing that I thought-
Ms. Hansen, we're on public participation, so-
Yep.
We're at the three minute-
So wrap it up quickly?
Yeah, I mean, we will ask you to come back and talk when we debate the item, so-
Do you want me to save the rest of my comments then?
Well, sure.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right.
They'll give you more time and we can interact-
Great.
Because it's on the agenda and as our association rep, are you our rep tonight?
I am.
Then you're certainly a participant in the discussion.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy McBride, are you here for public participation or are you here for your agenda item?
To present on the literacy book.
Okay, then you're not on public participation.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get you in a minute. Rebecca Steinitz.
Hi.
Hi.
It's me again.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a literacy consultant in urban high schools and an AHS parent. I'm here to talk about tonight's Park or MCAS agenda item. I'm glad you will not vote tonight on whether to give Park this spring, but I am disturbed that the only indication that you were considering this question was an agenda posted online late Tuesday afternoon. I hope you give the community a formal, well-publicized opportunity to weigh in on this matter. Arlington cares deeply about our schools, as you do, and we do not respond well when important decisions are kept from us. I also want to speak to the implications of this week's Board of Ed vote in favor of an MCAS 2.0 that will include Park items. There is no question, among those of us who have been following this compulsively, that DESI envisions MCAS 2.0 as Park untimed. Knowing he was losing the public opinion battle, Commissioner Chester brokered a deal for states to use Park items on their own tests, announced the very morning he made his MCAS 2.0 proposal, and I'm sure he is confident he has pulled a fast one on Massachusetts. DESI's certainty that the new assessment will essentially be Park is visible in the comment of a staff member on a conference call Tuesday that Kathy and I were both on. If you have the opportunity to give Park in 2016, you are giving your students and staff a leg up on the next-generation assessment. But I question that claim, which is predicated on DESI's assumption that they will get the Park identical assessment they seek. Eighteen months ago, many of you said that Park was a done deal, which was exactly what DESI wanted you to think. But clearly, that deal wasn't done, and this one isn't either. The final Park MCAS hearing on Monday night, where I spoke, showed significant determined opposition to Park. On Tuesday's conference call, Chester was unable to answer questions about the percentage of Park questions in the new assessment for the platform that assessment would use. When Kathy asked about the timeframe for receiving Park data next year, I don't know if you know, but this year the data came last week, not so great for instruction, the response was, quote, "roughly the same timeframe as MCAS," roughly, which was hardly convincing. So I truly do not see why a district, especially a high-achieving district like Arlington, would shift to Park. Every district will be held harmless for the new assessment in 2017, so we don't need to administer unnecessary practice tests to protect district accountability rankings. We don't know what the new test will look like, so we might not even be practicing the right thing, and we could be setting many of our students up to endure three different testing models in three years for no student-centered reason that I can discern. Teachers can still analyze the Park items that are finally online, and they can prepare their students for the skills the new assessment should address. But why change tests in the middle of an uncertain process? I hope Arlington still cares more, I'm certain Arlington still cares more about educating children than preparing them for tests. If this is the case, we should be teaching our children, not giving them unnecessary, ill-advised tests. Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Hearing, none. We go now to the coaching of teachers in Arlington public schools. Superintendent?
All right. I'm going to ask Dr. Chesson if she would introduce our presenters.
Thank you. So this evening, we, okay, one of our presenters just walked in the door, so we're happy to hear that. So tonight, we have three people who have been intimately involved in our literacy coaching model. We have Tammy McBride, who is one of our literacy coaches, Dawn Miller, who is a teacher at the Dallin School, and Thad Dingman, who is the principal at the Dallin School. And I'm not going to steal any of their thunder. I want you to hear the great work that they've been doing.
Can I read out passwords? The best play plan. Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Hansen. I'm also a K-5 district literacy coach in the district. And I'm really pleased to introduce, for the first time, I think, in front of the school committee, Tammy McBride, who took the place. I've stopped calling her the new Evelyn, so she has her own identity in the district now, and she has made quite a splash. She's been just fantastic to work with. Teachers love to work with her, and we really can see already what kind of difference she's making, so it's been really exciting to work with her. Do you want to say hello?
Thank you, thank you for having us, and thank you to Linda. I mean, I have a wonderful role model to learn from, so it's been a great partnership.
So we have just, so Dawn, do you want to introduce yourself? Just say hello.
I'm Dawn Miller. I've been teaching in Arlington for the past 28 years, and it's been a great pleasure working with Tammy.
What grade?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade, isn't it? We-
Hi, everyone. Thad Dingman. I've been at Dallin one year. Dawn has me be principal.
And I think they were over at the high school looking for us all, so that's why they're just showing up now. So we put together just a few slides, very, very short video of the co-teaching model that Tammy and Dawn have been using, and then just a few slides at the end. So literacy coaching in Arlington. So really, overall, we work on meeting together with teachers, analyzing data, supporting teachers in their professional growth, and helping plan curriculum and lessons together with them. The overarching goals are to directly support teachers with reading and writing in these areas. Again, working on new curriculum, working specifically on new instructional practices, differentiating instruction for students, and their own goals and growth and development of their practice under the new evaluation system.
One of the most exciting parts of this role is getting to partner with teachers and actually be in the classrooms. This summer, I had the pleasure of joining Arlington teachers at the Teachers College Homegrown Institute for Writing Workshop. That's where I met Dawn. And in that week of learning together, towards the end, Dawn was really interested in learning more about the workshop model and kindly invited me to work with him right away in the fall in the classroom, which has been a joy. So this video is of Dawn and I jigsawing a writing workshop lesson. It's a realistic fiction unit, and you'll notice this is just the first part of the lesson, doing the connection and the teaching point.
Hi, writers. I want to tell you a little story about something that happened to me. When I was on my cruise this summer, I had fallen asleep before being someplace that I don't, that I'm not used to being in. You know, you don't think, when you wake, I was awakened in the middle of the night by this banging noise and this movement, and the bed was moving and shaking. I'm like, what, where am, what's going on? Where am I? I looked around the room and I still wasn't sure where I was. Then slowly, I began to realize, oh, I'm on my cruise. I don't know what's happening, though. And then I did realize what was going on.
As today, Mr. Miller and I want to teach you that, just like when he woke up in the middle of the night and was like, where am I? Right? You need to turn the lights on in this cruise cabin. As writers, you need to do the same thing in your story. You need to turn the lights on in your story so your reader knows where is your character? Where is this action happening? Okay? So as writers, we're going to teach you today how to turn the lights on in your story so that your reader knows exactly where your characters are.
So that's a little bit of Team Miller and McBride in action. And, you know, I think one of the huge pieces that's missing from the video are the children. And for Dawn and I, it's a joy. We're having fun together. And if you could see the joy of writing and the students and them responding to the two of us, we get to confer with that many more students, meet with small groups, give feedback, and all the while, just putting the joy into our teaching and the learning for the students. So it's been, it's been a great, great part of the job. Coming out a little bit, looking at the big picture, the coaching role across the district. Linda and I are both charged with creating and maintaining an elementary literacy site for teachers, where we have lessons available, assessment information, resources that support the curriculum that we update on a regular basis for teachers. We also plan and present monthly literacy professional development across the district on a lot of our Tuesday afternoons, and we support and present along with grade-level teachers across the district. We also plan and present ELA summer professional development and curriculum work, so we can dive a little deeper and take the time to think about that. And also, across the district, we oversee the Response to Intervention Reading Program with all the district reading professional teachers and talk a little bit about program implementation for intervention. Our coaching role encompasses the seven schools in Arlington, and at each of those schools, Linda and I travel to provide additional supports and faculty meetings to dive deeper into our new reading and writing units, instructional practices. So it's a great way to, you know, after a grade-level professional development, to go into buildings and dive deeper and have more time to learn with teachers. We also go across our buildings and meet on a regular basis with the principals. This is a really powerful conversation that we get to have with them. The principals have been so great in wanting to know more from Linda and I about what would reading workshop look like, what does writing workshop look like, what are the kind of supports and resources we can provide for our teachers. We get to sort of support principals and their goals and teachers and their goals, and we discuss common practices for reading and writing. It's a great partnership.
So another thing that we do is we meet with teams of teachers on a regular basis. Part of our job is to train teachers in data protocols and figuring out how to tie that data back to instructional practices. We also meet with grade-level teams to support discussions around setting literacy-related student learning and professional practice goals, and we support teachers in looking at student work, sitting down with a pile of pre-unit writing assessments and thinking about, what is this telling us about what our strengths and the student's strengths and weaknesses are, and what can we do to change up instruction and target instruction based on these work samples. We also meet individually with teachers. This example of co-teaching that's going on at the Dallin School in the fourth-grade writing program, we are available to go into classrooms and model whole-class and small-group lessons, identify resources to more fully support and differentiate the instruction. And we also spend a good part of the beginning of the year driving around from building to building, pulling our little cart behind us, dropping off the materials for the new classrooms. We had, I think it was five new, brand-new elementary sections to get all the materials for and make sure teachers knew what to do with it. So on any given day, you'll find us zigzagging around the district with our, pulling our carts. So literacy coaching by the numbers, we work with two content areas, both reading and writing. We work at sixth grade levels, K through five, in all seven elementary schools. And we also collaborate with 12 reading teachers and two Title I literacy tutors. There are 128 classroom teachers in all that we work with, and we also, you know, working with Arlington Public Schools teachers and students is priceless. That'll sound familiar. We're going to just, yep, we have a little send-off, and then we're going to invite Dawn and Thad up to say a few words. You know, it just came up when we were practicing before. It's loading. Any questions while we're waiting for it to load? It'll be up.
Soon.
Well, while we're waiting, do you guys want to come up and maybe just talk a little bit about your experience?
This year, meeting Tammy, first of all, in the writing program that we had attended this summer was just an eye-opener for me because she just zeroed right in on what we need in Arlington for writing. So co-teaching with Tammy has really inspired my kid, the children in my classroom. The biggest thing that I think I encountered was the boys, we were getting ready, the next class was phys ed, and the boys, not the girls, I said, okay, it's time to go to phys ed. They said, can't we just stay here and keep writing? Now, that was the most amazing thing out of my 28 years of teaching that has ever happened, the boys wanting to stay. And it just, I think the co-teaching model with Tammy and I, too, we're just bouncing back and forth, and it just gets them thinking. And how can I be the best possible writer? The other thing is, I have 25 students, so trying to meet the needs of the 25 students that I have, being able to zero in on small groups with different needs has been great to have Tammy take a group, I'll take a group to work with, and it just helps them greatly. The co-teaching model just works. I've done it in the past when I taught first grade, because I really needed that in first grade to just keep the kids going. But the best thing about this is also getting to meet with her once a week, and then as a fourth-grade team, we meet with her once a month to talk about all the writing program that's hap, that we, everything we need. And she's providing us with supplies and charts and just something that we just don't have time to make with everything going on in the classroom. So again, having Tammy, she's a great literacy coach, and I enjoy working with her, and so does every other teacher that I know that I've talked to about in fourth grade. And she runs great workshops, too.
As we wait for Thad to come up, I want to compliment Dawn because he's a good teacher, and he's been teaching for 28 years, and he didn't have to do this. And he put himself out there, and he wanted to know, how can I even be a better teacher than I am now? And I, I want to compliment him on that because not every teacher is looking to do that. And Thad, if you can talk a little bit about what coaching has meant to your building?
Sure. You know, the first thing I think about is, and I'm sure in 28 years, Dawn has seen a lot of iterations of professional development. And just seeing a veteran teacher, and Dawn is a happy guy, but just to see you so elated in the classroom has been wonderful. And Tammy and Dawn have invited me in, and it's been wonderful to sit and be a part of it, and also to be a part of the feedback model. Both have been really open to an extra set of eyes as they're going through this. And, you know, ultimately, you know, I think the best thing that we can ever do is prioritize our investments for children, and this investment in teaching and in teachers is really paying off for the writers in the classroom. I think that's really what everybody wants to hear, you know, we're making an impact on achievement. So, and the other thing, I guess, that I like to see is this is an adult learning model at its best, because it's iterative all the time. We're learning by doing. They're looking at student work, they're planning together, we're talking in the moment. The kids are excited. So, you know, the, it's wonderful to see this, you know, it's hitting the needs of a 28-year veteran educator. It's certainly, as we continue, going to hit the needs of a range of different teachers. You know, I think our big challenge is right now prioritizing, figuring out where can we use this support? And we'd like to spread it over 30 different places, you know, because we're talking literacy is the big picture, reading and writing. And we, both Linda and Tammy, and I haven't got to work with Linda in this capacity, but I've heard wonderful things, too. You know, everybody wants a piece of this, of this support because, sorry to ramble, but, you know, one more thing to consider is it is a time where a lot of things are changing quickly. Standards have changed. We are putting really high-quality curriculum in the hands of our teachers. It's curriculum that takes time to learn and practice, and so having two people who are working directly with our teachers, so this is happening the best it can. We're thankful for the administration also for making this happen for us in our schools.
So when we get to budget time, you can remember this.
[laughter] Oh, he's behind you.
You might have-
All right, well, why don't you-
Why don't you just act it out?
You can do it. You can do it.
You know, well, we'd have to sing, we have to sing "Put Me in Coach." You know that song? Put me in coach. I'm ready to play today. And then, and then you see pictures of us, just imagine, pictures of us working with teachers, and yeah, there you go.
See, the selectmen don't have this much fun.
They don't have this much fun. I want to see-
Well, we have this much fun all the time, I just want to say, so.
I see this.
All right, well, we'll let Adam work on that. Maybe, I don't know if there are any questions for anyone in the group room.
Down the list.
Guys, do you want to, everyone?
Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, that's, this sounds like a really exciting thing. Just a clarification question. How much time are you in each classroom? So that, I mean, is it, it sounds like you're in great demand, so I'm sure you're pulled in many different directions.
Yes. I think I'd love to be in even more. Right now, with Dawn's room, where I'm in for-
Three days.
-three days a week for the writing block. Across other classrooms, it's looking differently. If a teacher is asking to come in and see a small group modeled, I might just push in and they watch that once, we have a conversation about it afterwards. So I think it's the time and it's the capacity that Linda and I, that there's two of us across the seven buildings. So we're trying to sprinkle it in however and whenever we can, but the most amount of time so far has been the co-teaching with the writing unit.
Okay, great, thanks.
Dr. Allison Appi.
This isn't exactly fair because it's not your area, but I'm wondering, what do we have? This sounds wonderful, and I'm wondering, what do we have for our middle school students or and their teachers?
I think I'm going to throw that one over to Dr. Chesson.
You know, as we've said, this is a very scarce resource. We're applying it right now into the elementary schools. Ideally, it's similar to math coaches. We have math coaches at the elementary level. We do not have that. One of the reasons is because elementary teachers have to be an expert in everything, and a lot of the content knowledge is tremendous, huge, overwhelming at the elementary level. So that's where we've focused our resources. At the middle school model, we have a, we have a K through 12 ELA director. So Deb Perry would be going in and coaching the teachers and playing a similar role, but also as the evaluator. It would be really nice to have someone who wasn't the evaluator. I think that's one of the nice parts about this model, is that these people are not, they're about professional growth and development, they're not also part of the evaluation process. So-
Yeah. Yeah. We go-
There you go. People are always trying to shut me up.
I thought you guys, I thought you guys were singing on this today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's all right. Okay, Mr. Hayner.
The, thank you very much, it's really exciting to see this. My experience with co-teaching was similar, we had a person come in, the director. Is there any thought of co-teaching with the other 4th grade teachers and setting up, looking to find time and doing that as you grow this program?
Yes, I think to that question, I would say, we have this lab site model that I think you heard about some last year where we have district, you know, leader, teacher leaders that are willing to host other teachers coming into their classroom. I think down the road, the idea is, teachers get more and more comfortable with this model and start to say, "Sure, I'll, you know, have people in for a couple times just within my own building or within another subject area." So I think it's definitely part of where we hope to be able to go with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Thielman.
So, thank you very much, it's a great presentation, it was a lot of fun. My question is for Dr. Cheston and Dr. Bodie, you know, in terms of the budget, what do you, what do you want us to be thinking about when it comes to this program?
I think it's the impact that this kind of professional development can have. We've talked numerous times about building the capacity of the classroom teacher, and the best way to do that is by in-class coaching. We've seen that with the math coaches, and we're seeing that with literacy coaches, so that if you look at us and look at the priorities that we will have set when you see the elementary principals and the secondary principals come in, you will hear that this is one of their top priorities. It's one of ours and it's one of theirs. So I guess that's what I'd like you to keep in mind.
And, and will you be asking us to think about enhancing this in the FY16, FY...
If there was, if there were sufficient funding, expanding it would definitely...
Extending it, okay.
Would be expanding, having another person so that these two ladies...
Okay.
Don't have to clone themselves, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at, okay.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your presentation. A couple of things, is that I do accountability for a living for another school system, and one of the things that we find universally is with strong leadership principle and excellent coaching, we get really great instruction in the classroom. And because the coaching model just inspires reflective practice, and that's really the key here. And Tom Brady has a coach, and we find our best teachers are the ones who are really interested in having great coaching to go with it because there's always something more to learn, something new to try, another set of eyes is so important, which is why this is such a valuable, valuable program. And just for my colleagues who don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis, I can't emphasize enough just how important your work is and how I appreciate this presentation tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next item up on the agenda will be the park or MCAS discussion, and the superintendent will come back to her chair to join us. Don't get too far from the mic, Ms. Hanson.
I'm not going anywhere.
Good.
Let me just give you a, well, Dr. Cheston's getting this set up. Actually, we've already had a bit of an introduction already in public participation to the situation that we are currently finding ourselves in this year. The, the proposal by Commissioner Chester to have a different type of assessment that combines park as well as MCAS has been approved by the Board of Education. We have, we have been given the option to make a decision as to whether we would, we would choose to, to have the park test in Arlington in 2016. A decision regarding that needs to be made by December 18th. So we have some time to think this through. As we're considering this decision, there are a lot of factors, and some of them have already been expressed, and Dr. Cheston's going to go through some of the thinking that we have been doing over the last, actually, few days. We, we had some glimmers that this was probably going to be an opportunity for us all from a meeting that we had attended a couple of weeks ago. Now, one of, we've also heard that we would be held harmless. What that means is that if we are a school or a district at a certain level, depending upon that performance, we are not necessarily going to go, we're not going to go down a level. It doesn't mean that we couldn't go up a level, it's just that you're held harmless. However, your performance is still available to the district and all of the, all of the test questions and the, the kind of analysis that we have been doing with MCAS has been promised to be available as well as park. I think this year of implementation, it's been a little bit, it has been slow, there's not a little bit to it, it's been very slow in terms of getting this information out to districts, which is not the intent of state assessments. The intent is that you get timely results so that you can do implementation of things that you need to work on. So, so that is, that is a real issue. It's hard to say, the commissioner said that we would have rough, roughly, we would have the same kind of timeline as MCAS, which means that we get the results in August, and even though the information's embargoed for a while, we are able to plan going into the school year. And, and for one thing, we are able to set up, for example, at Edison, our different groups for intervention. So hopefully, that would be the case. As we, we make this decision, there are different components to it. It is, it is possible to stay with MCAS. However, in this, in this proposal, the following year, in '17, all towns, all districts in the Commonwealth are going to have MCAS 2.0, which is going to be a blend of the two tests. As they had, was true last year, it will be true for the next couple of years, you have the option as district to take this either online or in paper form. So anyway, this is the, the broad look at this. We, we have a proposal, we have a presentation here to give a little bit more information about it. We're going to certainly welcome a lot of questions that we have in, in time to sort of, to weigh the pros and cons of what the decision, decision will be for the district.
Okay, I want to start by saying that, as Ms. Hanson said, she and I have worked extraordinarily closely. I know that you feel, you, you don't have a copy of this, and I apologize, but the decision was not made until Tuesday. I also wanted to make sure that I had sufficient time to go and speak to teachers. I know that was something the school committee gave us a lot of feedback on last year, and so I immediately, when it became apparent, sort of the direction that things were going in, I went immediately to see Ms. Hanson and said, you know, "The vote is Tuesday, given that we'll know on Tuesday what will happen." I planned to go and did go to the 3, 4, grade 3, 4, and 5, elementary professional development on Tuesday afternoon, shared with them the vote, shared with them the opportunity for them to come and meet with me yesterday afternoon with Ms. Hanson and I, shared with them the opportunity for them to email me, encouraged them to take Ms. Hanson's survey, answered a few brief questions, but I didn't want to take away the time for their professional development. And I, and I want to use that, hopefully, as a theme, that while we want to hear what teachers have to say, we also don't want to derail all the good work that we're doing for this issue. We feel like there's a resolution or there's a proposal for this issue that would kind of meet both masters. So as Dr. Bodie said, in 2017, all of the districts will be taking MCAS 2.0. The DSE is putting out the RFP for right now. I was involved in watching the Twitter feed from the Board of Education meeting on Tuesday afternoon. Tuesday morning, Commissioner Chester was emphatic that he had done a significant amount of research on how long it would take to bring up the test. He spoke, as we heard in public participation, quite emphatically in the conference call. And this morning at Edco, I was told that people who have, people that are MCAS readers, those are teachers that go in to help score MCAS, have already been, who were originally sort of dismissed and told that they, their services were no longer to be needed, have already been asked to come back and look at park items and figure out what, if any, MCAS items need to be fit in with the park. So I think it's a fair statement to say while this test will be under the control, Massachusetts' control, given the time period it'll be offered, the accommodations that will be allowed. One of the biggest concerns in previous years has been that we had to have, offer the same accommodations as all the other park consortium, and now we're free from that regulation. The length of the test and the information that we're going to release, they're all be under Massachusetts' control. The timeline for this is less than one year, and the commissioner was very emphatic that therefore this would fit the description of a test that is substantially based on park. And I think that that's going to be an understatement, based on the information that I've gotten from Edco, the information we got on the conference call, and the Twitter feed that I saw on Tuesday. And the commissioner has stated, actually stated, on his conference call, in the Twitter feed, and I think twice in the conference call, "The schools that did MCAS last year that switched to park for the spring will provide their students with a substantial leg up in preparing for the test to be offered in 2017." So to me, based on all the information that I have already have, it clearly indicates that likely the largest proportion of the test that we'll see in 2017 will be from park. What do we know about accountability? Dr. Bodie has already touched on this, so I won't emphasize that anymore. What do we know about the reported results? That we would get the results about in the same timeframe, she's already touched on that. I want to assure people that there'll be district, school, student, and item analysis results. Right now, the item analysis results are lagging because they're in the process of completing the report, and that's why it hasn't been released, but they are in fact expecting to release item analysis. And all released items, similar to MCAS, will be shared. Just like MCAS, all MCAS items are not released, all park items will not be released. You can't use some, they use some items to sort of level set the testing so they can compare from year to year. If you release those, then everybody knows what the questions are, and now you don't have a basis for comparison from year to year. It's the basics of the psychometrics that is associated with it. This is a communication plan, if this was, if there are, the proposal to go forward was approved. We had focus group meeting for elementary teachers on 11/18. I'm going to the middle school tomorrow morning. We give every teacher the opportunity to provide us feedback. If we have a recommendation that's, that we think is in draft format, at least enough to share with staff, even if it's not approved, we could say to staff, "This is what we're thinking, if this is something that, that we feel that is comfortable going forward." We would give out the training plan that we have so that staff could review that as well, again, even know that this hasn't been voted, but if it's voted in, this would be the training plan, so that staff would have as much information upfront as possible. If park was approved, we could have lead teacher positions in each of the buildings, someone who coordinates that, and we had that in the plan last year, and we would be able to post those in the beginning, in the middle of December. I would be also available to go around to building meetings in November, December, and January, similarly to what I did when we put in the new teacher evaluation system when we were having people come up with DDMs. In terms of parents, should we, after this discussion, feel like this is something that has a possibility of going forward? We could make a draft recommendation and communication out to parents. Dr. Bodie has an email address that's specifically for parents to be able to send in information, it's APS superintendent. Parents could, even after tonight, could email into that email address. I've told Dr. Bodie, I will personally look at all the emails and reply to all the people who submit park suggestions, comments, or concerns. And if that's approved, we would put a link on our website for park so that parents could see what was going on, teachers could see what was going on. Teachers also have a separate website called the Teaching and Learning website, and all that information would be up there. If this is approved to move forward, we would hold parent forums in the month of January, and I would also be available to go to PTO meetings similarly to the work I did when we first began to adopt the Common Core. This is a little bit about the training plan. We base this plan on the idea, and we'll keep coming back to this, that we are doing this as a trial run. We are not going to change our curriculum, we're not going to change our scope and sequence, we are not asking people to do test prep, that the training will be specifically on the mechanics of the test. As a matter of fact, we want everybody to take, if this was to be approved, to take a deep breath and step away from the accountability table, okay? Really concentrate on getting those initiatives, which are focused on the Common Core, really deeply grounded in all the classrooms, and really say that when we take this test, it's, you know, it's kind of like a trial run, it's a trial period. We don't want to spend a lot of time on the content, but just on the mechanics. How does it work? How would you, what are the different question types, et cetera, et cetera? We would recommend, based on the teacher feedback, that we, based on teacher feedback, while we feel that we would be comfortable with all the schools taking a computer-based test, I'm sure Ms. Hanson will give you all the details, but that was one of the largest concerns of teachers, and therefore, we would recommend that one or two schools would do computer-based testing, and we have people in the trenches that would go into all those classrooms and train all those teachers, just to get used to, again, the mechanics. We also have an online training video that would be available for, to review or to cover what students have missed, and the trainings would be focused between February and mid-April, so it wouldn't be too far before the test, but not too close to the test. So some of the concerns or the considerations that we have, the first one is about stress. We don't, our goal is to stress people out less, not increase their level of stress. And the Hold Harmless Clause in 2016 would allow us to gain experience from this test without the accountability stress. And I need to tell you that that is a very real thing, and that teachers will tell you from the day they walk in the door in September, they are thinking that the end of the road is MCAS, that, that, they don't think about it all the time, but it's always in the back of their mind. But there's also concerns about that. We have students, teachers, and administrators that will be involved. If we do any computer-based testing, IT will be involved. Stress will be really higher if we emphasize teachers and students that they have to study, that they have to gear up, that they have to do additional test prep. And so we're not looking to do those things, we really want to keep the test stress down. There is no long composition for grades 4 and 7, so their format, that's one thing that's taken off, out of the format. The testing is all in one window and it's late in the year, it doesn't start until April 25th. So it allows teachers to really focus on teaching for a longer amount of time and not to have the two breaks in curriculum that currently happen in the testing cycle. You'll see the, I talked about the timing a little bit. Technology, we would have the opportunity to get the bugs out if we have at least one school that's doing a computer-based testing while at the same time being held harmless. And we do have an option, and Dr. Bodie and I verified this again, that we don't, we have the option to not have. It's not all or nothing at all, you can have one school do computer-based testing, everybody else can do paper. What you can't do is split a school, that's the one thing they won't let you do. And this will allow us to find out if our Wi-Fi capacity is up to the task. We think it is, we've had some problems in the fall, we've now identified that it's a piece of equipment, a Wi-Fi controller that has to be replaced, and we'll be in the process of replacing it over Christmas break. And we'll find out which devices seem to work better if we have one or two schools, which ones does it seem to be is a better testing environment. Again, the length of the test, it is a timed test, but students with disabilities and students who are ELL, which is different from MCAS, can have extra time. The results thus far are showing that general education students have sufficient time, and there's a, the state has collected much data on this. It is a longer test in terms of the number of minutes, but it is less testing periods, so you don't test in March and then test again at the end of the year, there's only one testing period. Some general education students may be stressed by the timed environment, but at the same time, especially students in middle school, as they get to high school, as they take the PSATs, SATs, those tests are all, are all timed, so it helps them to get used to it. Accommodations, there's still something to be found out about the accommodations, there's a number of really nice accommodations that are available in the park. And the computerized testing, all students can have read aloud, whether they are a general education or a special education, they can, in the math test, they can have it read aloud to them. If we had a school that was going computer-based, but we had a student in that school that was a special education student for whom computer-based would be inappropriate, paper and pencil for that student is an acceptable accommodation. There is a statement here that IP's may have to be updated. Last year, schools were allowed if, to send home a letter to parents, just letting them know that their student's IP currently did not have anything that called for unlimited time on state tests, because that wasn't necessary to put in IP for, for MCAS. for unlimited time on state tests, because that wasn't necessary to put in IEP for MCAS, but that they were going to allow their students to do that, so that you didn't have to have multitudes of IEP meetings. And as IEPs meetings came up, that would, that would be updated. Previous to this, graphic organizers' checklists and reference sheets were not allowed. But again, since we're not, we're taking this test sort of isolated from the park consortium now, we sort of have control of our own destiny, that will be one of our questions that we ask. There are two additional conference calls next week, on Monday and Thursday, and training we've already talked about.
I hope it's not next Thursday.
Oh, sorry, Monday and Sunday. I'm saying Monday and Tuesday, it's next week. It's all blending together for me. Again, this chart just shows you the number of sessions that happen in the MCAS in the park. You know, in, in some cases, there are slightly more sessions, but as we said, it's, it's all in one time period. Any teacher will tell you that if you have any kind of testing session during the day, it kind of blows the rest of the day out of the water, so by confining it to the very end of the year, you have a much more concerted time to offer curriculum. And I want to show you an example of a math question, so that you can sort of understand what we're talking about. So, this is an example of a park math question. This is a fifth grade math question. One of the things that is interesting about this question and different from MCAS is that there are, you have to select two comparisons that are correct. There is more than one right answer. It is looking for students to have fluency in multiple representations of numerics. And I want to see if I can get it.
Show, show the MCAS one?
Yeah, I'm trying, there we go. And that's the MCAS question that would match to it. So, you can see, this is a pretty straightforward question. It's just asking you which of the inequalities are true. Only one of these is a true statement, there's only one right answer, all of the questions are in the same format. Did you want us?
No.
Okay, okay. So, I'm just trying to emphasize the difference. This is much, the other one was much more Common Core. As you can see, it's asking for students to have a much more deeper understanding. And it also allow, helps students to be able to figure out things over time. Information that we still want to gather is specific accommodations for special education students, whether we will have to modify those IEPs, or that waiver was just for last year. We'd like, I'd like to get more feedback from the middle school teachers, I am going there tomorrow. The final draft of the schedule, we have a couple of drafts of schedule, but we really can't make a schedule until we make a decision if we're going to go forward, and if that's going to be paper and pencil, or online, or a combination thereof. We will still be use, and whether we will be still using the same technology as we did in the pilot, which allowed us to not, to not get, try to get too technical here. But when you take the question, it's not like you're sitting at your computer at home and you want to order something online. So, you put in the information and you hit enter, and it sends it up to the internet, and then you get a message back from the internet. We use what's called a caching server, so it's as if you put in the information and it sends it to the computer that's on that desk. And then we put in the information and it sends it to the computer on that desk. And at the very end of the testing cycle, when all students are finished, it goes from that computer up to the internet. So, that the only connectivity that you're worried about is that between the individual computer in the classroom and that computer, as opposed to going out to the internet. So, what is our recommendation? We have a draft recommendation at this point. We are still collecting information, but right now, our recommendation would be that we would do park in the spring of 2016. That one or two schools would do digital, and the remaining would have either the option to do digital or paper and pencil. We'd like to encourage at least one or two schools, and there are schools I have in mind that I think would be a good match based on a whole bunch of things. If not, at least there are some schools that have hardwired connectivity, so then we wouldn't even have to worry about Wi-Fi. If that became a problem, it would be a backup plan certainly, but that's possible. But we will also, again, want teachers to have an option to choose. So, if a school felt, it wasn't one of the schools we were thinking of that would do online, but they really felt like that was something that the teachers and the principal decided that they wanted to do, we would certainly support that. Again, no changes to the curriculum or scope and sequence. We're not asking teachers to change anything they're doing. As a matter of fact, what we'd like, the only thing we'd like them to change doing is worrying about having the students take this assessment in the spring. No test prep except for familiarize staff and students with the format and question types. Completely a try-on, test-drive experience, which will allow us to find out where we stand in terms of the Common Core. I spoke to most of my counterparts in EDCO this morning. The vast majority of the people in the room, I think there was one person that did MCAS last year. Everybody else in the room had done park. I talked to them about their experience. And they're sort of seeing a trend that their elementary school students are doing as well or better than they expected. That middle school and math is doing as well or better than expected, and that ELA is the area where everybody sort of agrees that the Common Core depth of implementation in middle school is not as deep as we need to be in order to be prepared for this test. That's what their experience is. I think that's what our experience would be, but I will not know until we actually would do something, so.
Okay, Ms. Hanson.
Yes.
Hello again. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to just kind of recap where I was and finish my remarks, and then I'd be happy to answer questions or not. And I know it's kind of unfair to read statistical things and not give you paper to look at, but I'm doing it with a purpose. I just want you to be thinking up here. So, overall, again, about half of the teachers who are going to administer the test in grades three through eight took the survey. Of those teachers, about 65% said their preference would be to stick with MCAS. 25% said try park, paper and pencil, under Hold Harmless, and about 10% said try park, computer-based, hold harmless. But what I thought was equally, if not more important, were the factors that teachers kind of use to come up with their decisions. So, Laura mentioned some of them there. But the ones, the main reasons for people choosing whatever they chose, and I tried to give them a whole host of pro-test park, pro-stick-with-MCAS, just to see what factors were the most salient to them. The six top ones, three of them had to do with technology. The number one thing chosen was the technology. They did not feel that our IT support, we would be able to pull off a computer-based test district-wide. The stress of one more thing to do came in at number two. So, again, a lot of teachers are going through retail this year, still aligning Common Core, a lot of rolling out new units at the elementary level, new units in multiple content areas. So, that one more thing definitely came up. Technology, the current infrastructure was too weak to support computer-based. The fact that it's a timed test concerns teachers on how students are going to react to that, again, with the concerns around anxiety. Technology, the challenge of coordinating 2,600 students to take a computer-based test. But also in the top tier was the Hold Harmless Clause, the interest in trying out a test that we wouldn't, that people wouldn't be held accountable for. Although accountability is fine to say that you're not going to be held accountable, but they do publish the results still, you can still go online and find them. So, in some ways, having public results that aren't accountable doesn't necessarily feel like Hold Harmless if you're the one who's being tagged with those results. So, I do think, again, that it was significant that technology-related issues were three of the top six. Not at all a knock on our hard-working IT staff, rather just an acknowledgement of the daily challenges presented by the growing pains of increasing technology options for students and teachers. And if we're really going to be ready to fully integrate technology into teaching and learning and prepare for a district-wide online assessment, we really would have to make a larger investment in our IT department. So, unlike a year and a half ago, I don't come to you with a single recommendation. I act, I can see merits of both sticking with what we know and trying out park, the park format, under the Hold Harmless Clause. But I do really urge you to read through all the comments that teachers made and, and the factors that they considered. However, if the decision is made to try out park this spring, I have two very specific requests that I believe will be critical to the success of the endeavor. One is that the school committee and the administration publicly embrace a park trial as an opportunity to try out a new testing platform, with the sole focus on learning more about the way that park approaches assessing the Common Core standards. No time should be diverted from the important work the district is going, is undergoing, aligning curriculum and continuing our efforts to support teachers with professional development on instructional practices and the Common Core units of study. Again, the elementary level, all of the new different units of study still being rolled out in science, reading, writing, and math. And that, that work is critical to supporting our efforts to improve the educational experience for students and our alignment to the Common Core. So, really putting in a plug for not diverting time to studying the new test. And it's an evolving testing system, we, you know, we don't really know what it's going to look like ultimately. And if the decision is to go with park, I hope all parties make it very clear, I, I really feel like it's going to be a big messaging campaign. It's going to have to be very clear to parents, teachers, and the community that the accountability system for students, teachers, and schools, and the district will be turned off. It would be an experiment that would better inform our work going forward, and the goal would be to plan after that first exercise about, just thinking about what we learned going through that process. So, that was one, all of those three, one. Second, if park is the direction the district decides to go in, I think the message from teachers is strong and clear. There's a major apprehension around the district's capacity to carry out a full district online administration. And I really think this could be a disaster for all involved. Thoughtful decisions should be made about the realistic capacity we have to try out the online version in a limited number of settings. And with the current timeline that we have in front of us, we have four years to get to 100% online by 2019. So, we should consider ramping up thoughtfully in stages over time. So, many of us have very mixed feelings about some of the features of the current park test, but I know we will have the chance to discuss those concerns more fully in the future. And now that we have the certainty of a four-year plan, I urge the school committee and the administration to consider the feedback from teachers and to make a thoughtful decision that clearly articulates the reason for the decision, the goals for the decision, and contains a clear plan to communicate the rationale and goals to teachers and the community at large. Thanks.
You'll make sure that a copy of your data is transmitted to Ms. Fitzgerald, who will distribute it to us.
She has them right there. Actually, I just asked her not to do it until after I spoke, but yes, they're, they're right there. It's a lot of paperwork, and I didn't want you shuffling through it all while I was talking. But everything that I just said, including my remarks, the data from the survey is all included there.
Dr. Seuss.
Okay. Yes, I have a concern, two questions and a suggestion. Okay, so the concern is just to make sure that professional development doesn't get hijacked.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's my big concern. I mean, I know that you, you're suggesting that we not spend too much, put too much pressure and spend too much time sort of focusing on the test, but just, but you will have to do some professional development, but there's a lot more important things than what, preparing for a test.
There is no intention that we would cancel any professional development that is currently scheduled, and we would do the professional development for the vast majority of teachers during the day. But we also already have a contractual requirement to do MCAS prep test, preparation in terms of the administration of it, and we would use that time.
Got it, okay. Two questions. One, you probably don't know the answer to yet, which is what about Audison? Are you leaning, or teachers, administrators leaning to doing the park test there, or?
Yeah, Maureen Murphy, who was, is the assistant principal, if, if you want to.
Okay.
Maureen, do you want to? Because Maureen actually helped us administer the pilot at Audison, so she's a good person who's in the trenches.
Would you come forward to the mic, please?
So, I can speak a little bit about what the experience was like. We had a pilot test two years ago for ELA in math. We did, we used the computer labs, so they were hardwired computers. We did not try the wireless at that point. The, the test that the, the prep that the teachers did, the students did, all went very smoothly. They each went through a tutorial. The teachers, and the teachers also had their own training with some of the IT professionals in, in the district, and that went well. And then I sort of oversaw the teachers and the testing itself, and it was, it's very streamlined. For those of you who've been involved in MCAS, with the prep that goes into it, with the labeling and the booklets and the collecting and, and all this, all you do is you just print out a sheet of paper that has the student's user ID, and, and that's all they need. So, that makes things much simpler.
Do, do you think that teachers in, at Audison would be inclined to want to go to the computer-based test, or, or do you think?
Without, without having pulled the faculty, yes. I would think that there's probably mixed feelings with the sixth grade iPad initiative and how much they're being used now. I'm sure they would be interested in, in trying it and seeing what it's about. I think that there's interest in the different levels, but we would, I think we're working on collecting the data on devices and usage and, and, you know, what it would take to, to put it all together, so that's where we are.
I have then, one more question, a suggestion. So, the, the, thank you very much. The second question is a bigger question that I'm sort of beginning to understand, but don't quite fully understand what this held harmless means. Because I know what it is for a district to sort of be harmed by their scores, right? But we're never in that status, like, we're not going to, we're not falling to a level five, right? So, so I, so I want to sort of just have a better idea of what does it really mean for teachers to be held harmless, you know, to, buildings to be held harmless, so forth.
The answer is very simply, our level-one schools will not go down from level one. Our level-two schools will not go down from level two.
Yeah, but that doesn't, what does that mean? I mean, I don't, I still don't understand what that means. You know, parents who might want to move into our district, look at our levels, and that might be a consideration for them. But we don't, nothing it seems changes if we go from a level one to a level two.
I mean, for example, I mean, where we tend to run into trouble on level-two schools is not with the population as a whole, it's with the high-needs subgroup. So, that what would happen if you've got a school in that circumstance, i- if the reason why they're a level-two school changes, and they move up to level one, they will become a level-one school. However, a school that we have that's level-one, that tries out the test, that doesn't do quite as well and trips over one of the tripwires that would normally move them down, they would not become a level-two school during a Hold Harmless year. So, that if you've got, I mean, for example, the high school last year was level one. So, that if they indeed are a level-one school this year, they would be guaranteed to be a level-one through, school through the two years of Hold Harmless. So, that's not a bad thing to happen.
I understand that. I think I just don't understand what it means for teachers, you know, for principals, you know. I, I understand there's a lot of stress, and certainly, the school committee is very concerned about these levels and, and our data. But, but, for example, how does a teacher, what would a teacher feel by being told that he or she was not being harmed?
Well, teachers take very seriously the level their school is. And in fact, the school committee has taken this very seriously over the last few years, and having is one of the district goals, PPI scores of seven, of not below 75. And SGP's. So, there's a lot of pressure just even from district goal, saying that we, we think this is, this is important as a, as a district. If we would, if we were to go forward with this, we would literally take those goals out of our district goals. They would not be. I think that, I, I want to also emphasize that we don't punish teachers or, if we have, if we have identified that there is some pattern, and an individual year is no pattern in terms of an SGP score. Our response is, is not a punitive response at all. It's what can we do to help?
Right.
And what can we do in the way of extra professional development, some coaching, some mentoring? So, that part would not change. But I do think that there is a significant amount of internalized stress around the level of the school you're in. And in, and I'll be perfectly frank, I think that's been an issue at Audison for many years, of, of a lot of pressure about performing at a better level every single year. Will teachers and students still want to perform at high levels? Of course they will. But at the same time, there's a little bit of a, of a feeling of less stress if you know that we're taking this as an opportunity just to try it out. If we wait till 17 on this, not only are we going to be dealing with the variable of, of different types of questions, even if we did a paper, we'll be dealing with timed. Now, one thing that the State Board of Education did is makes next year as well as Hold Harmless. So, I think that the stress would be off in 17, but on the other hand, one advantage to... to the district, one advantage to teachers and departments, is by doing this, we get a sort of a chance to see really the work that we have been doing in aligning Common Core, the strong work we're doing in writing and reading and math, and to see, you know, where, you know, where we are relative to what the standards, how the standards are assessed. And I think it would be very educational for us in being able to take that information and then say, okay, well, what are we going to do in terms of curriculum adjustments? If we, but if we don't get, we don't get the results to the fall, so our summer's gone in terms of being able to really do any kind of curriculum work. So by getting two years, we give ourselves some time in order to do some updating or some adjustments, and as Laura was talking about, we have a teaching and learning website which is, is open to teachers, which we provide a lot of extra support and information in, not to mention all the curriculum apps. So I don't know if you want to add anything further on that?
I guess the last thing I would add is that there are many assessments that we give, that we've designed based on where we are in our curriculum and where we are in our teaching and learning within the district, and being able to be held harmless from the state assessments and also having that come off the goals. And I have to emphasize that by the school committee making a goal, we tell teachers there's a through line. There's the district goals, then those translate into school goals, which then translate into teacher goals. We would allow them to focus on those assessments that they have developed. DRA is the only other, there's a little bit of AMC, but the vast majority of the other assessments are ones that we have developed based on what we think are the power standards, based on what we're, where we are in curriculum, and to really look at that data and to focus on that data. And you heard the good things that they're doing in those coaching cycles, and that's the kind of data that they're looking at.
Mr.?
And then I have a suggestion. Where we to move in this direction, I would invite you to come to the Community Relations Subcommittee, where we are talking about doing something big in January in enrollment and then doing something in March on curriculum and sort of to coordinate those efforts.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Heiner.
First off, I'd like to state that MCAS 2.0 is just putting a new cover sheet on Park. There's no way you can put a quality testing tool together in a year and a half and dramatic changes in it. So it, to me, it's just a new cover sheet. Saying that, the issue of anxiety, you get used to doing something, it does not alleviate anxiety. As the child grows older, the stakes become higher, and that magnifies the anxiety on the thing. So, knowing how to take the test alleviates that aspect of it, the mechanic of it, but not the content, so the anxiety gets bigger. The changes in this, I'm a little bit concerned hearing that we're talking about doing some electronic and some paper. There's two parts to doing something new. The content part is doing a different test, I understand that part, but the other part is the learning about the electronics. Until we have a full assessment of everyone taking it electronically, we're not going to know what's happening. I'm also concerned, and I'm sure you have something, if we're taking the data from the child and putting it over here in a server or, I hope there's some sort of backup, because the day, the moment you press go and it disappears, that scares me. You mentioned before, the state won't allow in a building some paper, some electronic, but then I heard you say that the...
It has to be by school.
Pardon?
It has to be by school.
But you also made, you suggested that there might be an exception. I don't know whether that is...
Special education.
Is that a factor, or is that one of the questions that you still need to get clarified?
No, that is correct. It is an accommodation that's allowed.
Does that require an IEP in place for that accommodation, or can, if you have a child high anxiety that's not on a IEP, but you know it's going to have a direct effect?
I'm going to have to check that out, because one of the things, as I said last year, is that they were able to make accommodations without an IEP team convening, and I need to find out if that's going to be held the same. I don't think, you cannot do it on the fly, I will tell you that. But, but I, whether it requires an IEP team meeting or not, I have to find out at the conference call.
I think that's very important.
I absolutely agree.
Because of all the FERPER aspects to that as well, all of a sudden, we're putting another tag on, on the special needs. One of the selling features, we have a new test. We're talking about assessing the Common Core and the state, the things there. I have a deep respect for our teachers, the professionalism on their, every teacher is not waiting for a state assessment coming back to assess what he or she is doing in the classroom. Good teachers are doing that on a daily basis, moment-to-moment basis, going forward and keeping accurate records. We've put a lot of time and effort in training our teachers on dealing with data, and I'm sure a lot of them are doing that separate from standardized testing. To push us into something because it's going to give us an edge up, two years ago, everyone was talking that Park was going to be a fait accompli. Well, the reality is, it's not. And I would suggest the possibility, it's a gamble, it may not be a push two years from now, right now. We may be looking back and, Dr. Ampe and I went to Edco with school committees the other day, and those people that took it last year are taking it next year and will be assessed on it. They will not be held harmless next year.
All districts are.
I think two or six of all districts, they got held.
There was a revision at the meeting, there was a motion made by one of the members to extend the hold harmless.
One of the memo calls for the state, and I'm quoting it, "Commit to computer-based state assessments with the goal of implementing this statewide by spring of 2019." There is little support for that at the State House on a monetary basis. The issue of timing, going to computers would get data back to the communities very quick. That's not going to happen as long as a big chunk of this state is doing it on paper. That's a fact. And so, to practice it for the sake, for the reason of finding out where we are on the idea of Park, or the assessment of the Common Core, I can understand that. But as far as the technology part of it, unless we're all doing it, unless the state is all doing it, I don't know where we're going.
Can I just, I just wanted to say one thing? Because I've heard a number of people say that, that Park, we said it was going to be Park, 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 and then, that's not true. But I also heard you say that the MCAS 2.0 is Park with a different cover sheet. So, both of those things cannot be true.
I agree.
So, I agree with you that I think it's Park with a different cover sheet, and so therefore, I do think we know what the test is going to look like.
But the problem I have with that is that a vast majority of state, a group of states and a lot of communities in this state have said, "We don't want Park. We don't want Park. We want..." The concept of saying, "We're going to create a hybrid of MCAS and Park," if that is true, it's going to take multiple years to do it.
I think that's true.
And to just change the name in order to sell a product, you couldn't do that in the real world, change a product that people don't want by just putting a new label on it to sell it.
I think that it will be true that this is going to be a test that evolves, and that was true with MCAS. I can tell you that the early MCAS was very different than the MCAS a couple of years later. So I don't think, I think that that is absolutely going to be the case. One of the, besides the issue of curriculum, you mentioned a number of factors that are different in the test, which we acknowledge. There's the timing part of it, there's this, is a different emphasis and approach to the types of questions, and then there's the online. One advantage of this year of potentially maybe having paper in some schools, and I would, I would allow this, I would allow schools to choose, allows to take some of the, to separate some of those factors in over two years. So this year, you get the experience of what the types of questions are, you get the experience of timing, which is a new experience, though the, from what I understand, while they give a time for it, the vast majority of gen ed students do it in about two-thirds of the time allowed, but some don't. So it's a new, it's a new paradigm in testing. We don't do time testing in our common assessments. And then you could, you could integrate the next piece of it, which is a technology, you know, having both at the same time, if you're not in that kind of platform regularly, perhaps adds a whole dimension of stress to it that we could decouple by spreading it out. And so that's, that's a consideration, too.
If I may, just one... Go ahead. You mentioned about the test evolving. MCAS evolved because it was Massachusetts and took direct feedback from Massachusetts. This is not going to be just Massachusetts. This is going to be dealing with, if it's Park, it's going to be...
No, it is.
I understand that, but, but if the feedback, as presented in the memo, is going to be a consortium of Massachusetts people, of educators, parents, and things like that, you're not going to be creating that hybrid within a year. That's all I'm saying. And if you are creating the hybrid, which, which interested me, and it will have this evolving communication with the state and stuff like that, then it becomes a unique test to Massachusetts, and it won't be this big piece out there that Mr. Chester is selling for his company.
Okay, may I comment? I think that if you were starting from scratch and writing questions, I would totally agree. But the hybrid is really a mix and match. You can take the test, the questions from Park, but we have a bank of thousands of questions from MCAS as well. And so it's a question of just choosing which, which ones. To say that there's not rigor in the MCAS would not be correct either. There is some rigor, and there's some questions that are actually quite rigorous. In fact, in the Globe article the other day, they had a Park question and an MCAS question. The example they gave, I thought the MCAS question was more rigorous than the Park question. So it really, there's, there's a combination of both. I will say that the, one of the things we do in literacy and have been doing is looking to do much more writing and using evidence, and of course, Tammy and Linda were talking about how you sort of light up the room a little bit with it, too, but, but we also do a lot around writing that's just not a narrative writing. And that has not been assessed in the same way on MCAS that it is on Park. So, you know, we are, we have moved forward in the district in terms of much more alignment in some very important things, which are kinds of skills that our students need to be successful in our ever-changing world. And MCAS frankly has not kept up with it. They had predicted that MCAS was going to be more aligned, but it turns out that it really hasn't been as well as it... So, there are a bank of questions, and if you get educators together and you say, okay, let's put this together, you can create a hybrid. If you're going to start from scratch, you're absolutely right.
Let me go on to Ms. Starks.
First, a question. Is math also going to be in April? Because the slide said only the ELA would be.
I'm sorry, it's all, everything, the whole testing window is from April 25th to June 6th.
Okay, so that would be a yes. I also found it interesting that in the survey that Linda Hansen did, that even though it was MCAS versus Park paper, so two paper, MCAS won out handily, two to one, over two to one. So, and yet, what was interesting is that all of the comments were, that were negative, were about the technology. So that confuses me, because if I'm just comparing to paper tests, I'm not talking about technology. So, that was kind of weird. Like, they overwhelmingly want MCAS, yet the number-one thing they're worried about is the technology. And so, that kind of confuses me, because one of the choices was just to stick with the Park paper, and so that, that's kind of weird. But I feel like that one thing that gives me pause, I think, is that I feel like that this is being rammed down our throats. I don't like the fact that we have, you know, two weeks to put a plan together for dealing with this over the next three months. I really feel like that we need to be, I want to slow down the train, I want to make us think about it. I want, if we have to get to all computers by 2019, I would rather see a very detailed plan. I want to know when each and every student is going to be trained, when each and every teacher is going to be trained, and I want to see us ramp up. I in no way am for jumping on this bandwagon right now. I feel like there is a lot going on, there's a huge wave of discontent around all of this standardized testing, not just in Massachusetts, but across the country, and that, and I'm sick and tired of listening to Mr. Chester. I really am. I mean, he doesn't know what he's talking about. He, you know, he seems to be running in whatever direction, the dollars seem to be falling into his lap, and it's just pissing me off. I mean, I'm, I just feel like, I know MCAS isn't great, but right now, we know MCAS, and if we take it one more year, we have one more year of data that we have and we get nothing from Park. Nothing useful, nothing in a timely manner, and I don't feel like we've had the time to really sit down and think about it. It's not that I question all of the great planning that you've done, and that I don't think that we could do something, but I feel like everybody would feel so much better if we had a very clear plan about how every single student was, when are the first graders all going to have been tested? Are we really sure we got them all? Even Johnny, who's been out with the flu for three weeks? You know, like, I, I just, I don't want to rush into this. I feel like, you know, we're being forced to do it. I don't mind that the test is going to change over time, MCAS has changed over time, but I don't feel like I want to be the one to jump in. And so, just like I voted against Park last year, I will vote against it again this year.
Mr. Thielman.
I thought you voted for Park.
Yeah, you voted for Park.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did.
No, I would not vote for Park. Did not vote for Park. I'm sure that I was one of the dissenting voters.
I don't remember that, but okay, I could be wrong.
Your Facebook.
I have to check the, check the records. So, my question is this. If the school committee voted to stay with the MCAS, and we continued with a, the goal system that we have right now?
Yes.
And we said we wanted to have SG, SGP of 50 as our goal, and a PPI of 75 for high need students, or what, I can't remember the ex, what, what does that do internally? In terms of, in terms of, in terms of, what are people going to think about that inside the schools? What's that going to mean to a teacher who's going to know that in a year, that test is going to go away and it's going to be meaningless? And how's it going to be received internally? If that...
I don't know that I can answer the question about whether it's meaningless or not. I go back to the statement that the school committee sets goals, teachers are well aware that those goals translate to school goals, and those goals translate to teacher goals. So if the school committee keeps those goals, then teachers will keep those goals. The other thing that I want to caution the school committee is that levels, while primarily driven by the individual school's scores, there's also this in the bottom 20%. Now, would we end up in the bottom 20%? Unlikely, however, unlikely, unlikely, but we are being compared against, part of our rating is being compared against other schools, and as the sample size gets smaller, the impact of one school or another school's impact on your rating gets larger.
So I guess the question I'm asking, I mean, I'm trying to understand the academic value of putting all this time and energy into a test that's going to go away. So preparing for the MCAS, worrying about the scores, spending time at school committee meetings, looking at the data, worrying about whether or not you've met PPI or SGP, what does that, where does that get us as a district? If this test is going to go away?
I would say that it doesn't move us forward. We, we, even though I think there's increasingly a little disconnect between MCAS and the work we're doing, particularly in ELA, I would say, I would, we're going to continue the work that we're doing because it is, makes the most sense for students, the kind of emphasis on writing and the type of writing that they're doing, the kind of critical thinking that we're asking students to do in math, the next-generational science standards, which are going to eventually become part of our science testing as well. We will continue doing that. Now, are students going to continue to perform well on MCAS? I absolutely think so. Do I think that they would probably do well on the Park test? Yes, because our curriculum has been increasingly aligned to the Common Core. I think that there's a lot of misalign, there's been a misconception in general in the in general in the public, and it's certainly become very political, that there's something wrong or not good about the Common Core. And I would have to say that I couldn't disagree more. I think the emphasis on the type of reading that we're asking students to do is long overdue. While it's wonderful to be able to do a lot of fiction reading, the reality of our world today is we have to have discerning readers to be able to read sometimes very dense material and make sense of it, to use what they've learned to make arguments that are going to, that is going to be represented in their writing. And that is the work we're doing. We don't, MCAS, no energy's been put into MCAS to continue that effort to align more and more to that. So yes, will we continue to do well? We will. I see this as an opportunity to sort of decouple some of the stresses, spread it out. But we could also certainly go another year. We have common assessments that we use to understand how we're doing, and we'll continue to do that as well. And those assessments are teacher-written. They are often reviewed in curriculum committees over the summer. So our teachers are very much involved in both the development and the assessment of the work that we do. And the state test is just one piece of further data that we use. And I'm not saying it's not, just one, it's a very important one that we take very seriously, and as the committee does as well. At some point, we are going to be, we, I think that it has moved forward for whatever, whichever way you agree with or disagree with it, the state is moving forward to a different type of testing. And it's going to be different testing in terms of its content, what it's expecting of students, and it's also going to be different in terms of the form in which students take tests. That's already happening to adults. I mean, that happens with adult teachers, when students take, you know, GMAT tests. You don't take those tests hardly anymore on paper and pencil. It's just not how it's done. And it's going to increasingly be that way. So, that is the flow. That is where it's going. And we can either start moving in that direction, or we can just sort of wait till we think that it's in a more perfect state. I mean, that's the choice before us. And that's why we want to, I'm glad they're giving us to the 18th of December, because I think it's something that we, you need to have time to reflect on. And certainly, as we have more information, we would provide it to you. I know that while there was a big reach out yesterday with Laura and Linda, no teachers came to that meeting to talk about this. So, we're dealing with, it is, was a sample, but we, the teachers for the first time are really understanding where we're going to. I don't know when they reflect on this over the next couple of weeks, how they're thinking about this is going to evolve as well. So we're all at a new place and a new direction, and we have to see what our choice will be.
So a couple of points I want to follow up on is, I would love to hear from principals on what they think about this. I have a concern about thousands of students in Arlington taking a test that isn't going to, that's going to be obsolete, studying for it, or not studying for it, but being prepared for it in classes, classroom time, taken up, getting ready for a test is going to be obsolete. I don't think that's good policy. I don't think that's responsible policy. I interact with elementary school parents because of the age of my kids. And there's many, there are several parents that have already spoken to me, have emailed me and said, you know, and that these are folks that have some experience in public education in different districts. And so their position is, boy, it would be great to have my son or daughter take a test for a year that doesn't count. So that's a feeling that some parents in our district, some of the people that send their kids to our schools, think about. And I think we've got to listen to that. I'm going to listen to that and hope other people do as well. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I have a few questions and a comment. My first question is, how is Park educationally a better choice for students?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think we showed one question, I could show you even more, that is requiring students to utilize the skills that we're focusing on. The sad part, well, I've not told you elementary, but I will tell you about middle school and high school students, is that when you teach them something, the first thing they want to know is going to, is it going to be on the test. Because we've set a longstanding cultural that we assess those things that we think are important. So when we emphasize to students that they need to be able to take information from multiple sources, and they need to be able to give us multiple forms of the answer, or they have to be able to fastly go from one form of a number to another, and then we don't assess it, and the big assessment that they have at the end of the year doesn't assess it, I think it sends a mixed message. So I think educationally, we're asking students to then utilize those skills that they've been practicing all year in a very real way. I also think for those students that think creatively and out of the box, just the finding the one answer, I think doesn't allow, it has a very low ceiling. And the Park test has, what we call, has got a high ceiling. So that we have better information about those students, even those students that do exceptionally well. MCAS has a very low ceiling, and we get to a certain point, and we have no information. And we find that with some of the other assessments. And that's what makes us look at a different assessment. We're currently looking at an additional reading assessment, because the DRA score, up to a certain point, has a very low ceiling. So I would say that that's, educationally, it sort of validates the kinds of things that we're asking kids to do. It also provides us with additional information about students that are on the high end of the ceiling. And there are also accommodations when we get into the, when we get to the point where we would take, a vast majority of students would be taking it, if not all students, online, is that it allows for accommodations for every student, so that the test is really about measuring what the students know and are able to do, as opposed to what they're not able to do.
I had voted for MCAS last year, because I thought that the district would be better served by a longer ramp up to, towards doing electronic testing. What has been done to better prepare the district for taking Park this year versus last year, in this intervening time?
The, of course, the elementary schools have really been ramping up. For example, Stratton now has nine iPad carts. They have something like 18 regular classroom teachers. So students are using technology on a regular basis. They're very facile and comfortable with it. At the, we're now getting students that are coming out of Thompson, that also were from the one-to-one environment, that are going into the middle school, and then they're coming into sixth grade, and they have a one-to-one environment. Do I think that we're perfect? No. Do I think that from grades, actually from grades K through eight, are we doing a pretty bang-up job with exposing kids to technology and getting them comfortable about it? Yes, I absolutely do. We have some ways to go. In nine through 12, I think we made some great strides this year. I think by stressing the system this year, as painful as the first month or so of school was, it was being stressed because we put, I think David Good told me yesterday, a thousand additional devices. So we kind of tried to break the system, and we succeeded some weeks. But we've been able to figure out, okay, this one was a filter problem, so we need to change those filters, software filters. We know that the controller that we thought we were going to be able to limp along with, because it's four years old, not happening. And not only that, but we know that even when we put in that controller, eventually we'd like to go to, if we were to go to full digital, we would want a backup controller. So we are learning more and more about the support side of the system, as well as the skills that we're giving our students. And I think that the, I think that when we see what happens at the AEF event that they have in the spring, and we have students demonstrating what they know and are able to do with technology, the committee has been amazed. And I think that that's happening more and more every day. So I do think the students are comfortable with that. I also think that because we waited, and I know that that wasn't my choice, but because we waited, we got more information on what kinds of technology are best for the test. Originally, the makers of the test recommended that you, for example, use keyboards with iPads. They found out that that actually makes the application less stable, and that if you didn't use the keyboards, you actually got more stability. So, we've been able to work with our counterparts in EdCo to get a lot of information about what it looks like the best platform would be. So I think that those are kinds of things that we've done. And although I understand people feel like they're being rushed, I want the committee to know that after the vote last year, we spent significant amounts of time, and continue have spent significant amounts of time, planning for what we thought was inevitable. So while it may feel rushed to you, it feels almost like a fait accompli for us, because we kind of saw what was coming. And I know it's hard, and it doesn't feel good. And that was one of the reasons why Dr. Bodie and I talked about the fact that we would have a first read tonight. And, you know, we have till December 18th, and that they have even said, if you need a little bit longer than that, you can have it. I mean, the longer that we wait, I think the more uncertainty there is. But if it, waiting another week and having me talk to elementary school teachers again to say, why did you say, no, stay with MCAS, but all the concerns that you raised have to do with technology, is that because you thought that we definitely were going to go on? You know, I mean, I have no problem going and talking to teachers and bringing back the committee more information.
Okay. Got more. If we participate in Park, will we have better access to information about the test? I'm thinking, as the development of MCAS 2.0 takes place, will we have better information to better inform counter proposals? Or does it not matter if you're in Park or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, we'd have student data aligned.
We'll have student data. And we'll have a personal experience that would be able to bring to the table, as opposed to sort of standing on the outside. I would say last year, that was exceptionally true, in that the sense that if you were not, and people were talking at EdCo this morning, well, when I looked at this, when I looked at that, and I was like, what are you talking about? Because we did not have access to that information.
Okay. So then, my concerns are, first, that Park is timed, and I am worried that that's going to be a problem, not for everyone, but for that chunk of students who are staying in for recess, because they're not quite done with their MCAS, that those kids are now going to be hit with, you know, clearly, you didn't finish. And that's, especially when they're little, I mean, it was bad enough when they were having to stay in for recess, they still talked about, you know, this person didn't, and this is going to be even worse. It won't necessarily be as visible as the staying in. I'm concerned that if we're feeling rushed, that when, if the decision is made to go to Park, that parents are going, I understand, Mr. Thielman has parents saying, you know, ready to jump on the bandwagon. But I think a lot of parents are going to feel like they're not sure their children are ready for an electronic test. I understand you're saying we're only going to do it in one or two schools. But actually, I'm with Mr. Hayner, that that's the part that I'm the most concerned about, testing and making sure that it works, is the electronic. I think, I'm with the teachers. I feel like I just don't see this working. And I'd rather shake out the issues. And I understand that there seems to be a whole lot of push towards Park, but I'm just concerned, even with all of this push, that at the heart of it, it's a flawed test. And I understand that we're going to be forced to do something, and it looks like it's going to be this. But I still think it's a flawed test. And I don't like putting our students through something that is a flawed test. And I just, I don't see a good answer. I hear what you're saying, that, well, MCAS looks like it's a dead end. So I just, you know, I wish we could just vote for none of the above.
Well, I think the-
Just take a year off.
Yeah.
I think the, you know, those are certainly very valid concerns. I think the issue of concern about the technology, at some point, that's going to happen. At some point, if it's going to be this year, one school, we're on a, unless the Board of Education changes a vote over the next four years, we are on a trajectory that that's going to happen. And having it be in a smaller scale, at a time when there's sort of held harmless, is not a bad time to do it. It's to see what my kinks might be. We did not have that experience with the pilot, but the pilot is a different test. We are going to be having timed tests. That is going to be the reality that we're going to be having down, going forward. But there, they may find that they might make the periods longer, which they didn't do, as far as we know, for this year, based on the results of last year. They found that the amount of time that was given was very adequate. And the kids that needed more time were able to get more time through their IEP. And this year, they'll extend it to students that are English language learners. There is always going to be a time when you're going to have an adjustment issues, and a little bit of that, but you take those, you know that you're going to go through that, and you learn from it, so that you're going for, the next time, it's, you know, you correct. So one advantage is that you don't have too many variables at one time. And that is something to consider. Next year, it could be that we just, you know, that's, could be what you decide. And next year, there's still the option of doing paper. But at some point, we're going to have to do some testing to see how, our own beta testing, and see how that's going to work in our district. We have, what, we've made big leaps this last year, in terms of usage, in part because we now have teachers who are doing more with it. It's, we have the devices to do it, and there'll even be more next year. That's true. But we're not, we're not saying to do the whole district that way right now. So, those are concerns. And the issue of students being anxious about a test, that's not going to change. It's just not. And I, one of the things you always hope you can do for your children and other children, is that you give them enough experience with it, that with practice, anxiety does go down. The longer you put off something without having that experience, you can increase anxiety.
I don't, can, I just clarify, when I was talking about the length of the time of the test, and whether that would create anxiety, I'm not concerned, I think it will create anxiety beforehand. My concern is it will create a sense of failure for the children who are unable to complete the test afterwards. And just, and I'm talking about general ed students. I'm not talking about special, people who have IEPs that can have extended time or something. I'm talking about kids who are unable to complete the questions in the time that's allocated. And I just, I think, I mean, we'll see what happens, but I am concerned that there will be students like that, and that that is a very defeating kind of feeling, and that I just, I don't see how that's helping them.
Right. There were 220,000 students that took the test. They have a significant amount of data about whether students, that was, that was a pervasive thing that happened. The data shows that in fact, not only did that not be the case, that there were many students that did not finish. There was in fact, the students were only taking about two-thirds of the time. And can I just say that, as a person who's proctored SATs, I have a vivid memory of personally being in an SAT and not being able to finish. But when you proctor SATs now, kids are, kids are not finishing the test. They're sitting there doodling or staring at the ceiling. So I'm not sure if that also has had, you know, a change in the testing length. But this, they have a significant amount of data from two years that talks about how many kids didn't pass the test, and finish the test. And it's extraordinarily minimal. And those students generally are students who are special education students.
Dr. Seuss.
I just have a question about writing. So you mentioned that were we to adopt Park, that we wouldn't be testing writing? Does that-
No, it just doesn't have a long composition. It has plenty of writing in the test.
Okay, right. Okay, so there's not a separate writing component, because there's not a long composition. Would that be added to your understanding later on, or is that we're just going to move away from that?
The right, the kind of writing that it measures is the kind of writing that's consistent with the Common Core. And writing a narrative about, you know, a snow day is not consistent with the Common Core.
Got it. Okay, okay, thanks.
Mr. Hayner.
I would just ask you folks to push very-
I would just ask you folks to push very strongly, it, it's almost like an unfunded mandate. We will get the technology part and we will get it in place under this mandate and stuff. But the issue that that provides is the concept of immediate feedback. If they were giving Arlington back its results right away, or the communities that had the technology, that would be fine. The reality is, it's a statewide assessment and we're gonna be compared in the, in the whole thing. I would ask you to push forward that, and I would ask all of us to push our legislators and stuff to help the western part of the state. Because they, they are still struggling to get into the twentieth century. And to make this, again, the two components, the measurement of the new, our curriculum and stuff, that possibly will be there, whether I like the test or not. The other aspect of it, the technology, will get there. But right now, we're seeing our test results come back later than MCAS.
This time, yeah, right.
And, and, and whether it's just the shakedown of the, the full testing, or whether it's the, the component of all the paper aspect of it, how much of that is there? I don't know, and they haven't advertised it. People have asked.
Right. A lot of what had to happen was the Edwin Reports, Edwin Analytics is a statewide system that allows us to analyze data from MCAS. They wanted to get the six most popular Edwin Reports set up so you could also analyze data from Park. And that was one of the reasons why there was a delay in getting the responses out. And they also had to do a crosswalk in order to do accountability ratings, which will come out in the first week in December between the two tests. And that also held out a lot of the results from coming out.
Just real quick, you measured, you mentioned that the, if the pool of MCAS comes down, I would question if all of a sudden, there's five hundred communities, the only ones doing MCAS, and all of a sudden related to that, we get dropped. We could challenge that very quickly.
I'm, I'm not saying that that wouldn't be the case.
Oh, well, I.
No, I'm not saying that wouldn't be the case, that we could challenge it, yes.
I, I got an implication of that, and that's not a reason to, to go for it, that's all I was, thank you.
Question.
Uh, Mr. Thielman.
So, I'm just trying to get the timeline. December eighteenth, we have to let them know.
They've said that we could have an extension if we, you know, a couple, they're not looking for an extension of two months, but if we had a reason.
This one, question.
Chair answer this part of the question. We have a meeting on December third, we have a meeting on December seventeenth scheduled. I think.
No, the tenth.
Or December tenth, right, tenth and seventeen.
Yeah, the tenth and the seventh.
So, that we can talk on the tenth and we can decide on the seventeenth, or, you know, as the state is giving us the option. If we're really deadlocked on this, push to the first meeting in January because the state on that conference call said that we would be allowed to delay our decision if necessary. Go ahead, Mr. Thielman.
So, the, thank you. The principals have open, what, don't they have parent nights or, what's going on on the tenth?
Elementary have conferences.
Five minute conferences.
So, we're flipping the principals.
Yeah, so could they come on the, when can the principals come and talk to us about this?
The elementary principals are coming on the seventeenth.
Okay, so the seventeenth, that evening on the seventeenth, we could also ask the principals about what their recommendation is on this matter. Okay, so that's what I'd like to, if that's okay with everyone here, I'd like, if it's possible, like I'm here on the seventeenth, then just ask them what they think.
Sure.
We could be here anyway, yeah.
I mean, we, we've already talked to them, but you can certainly ask.
But I wanna hear from them.
Yeah, absolutely, I want you to hear it from them.
So, and, but we can also hear from the middle school, the high school principal, everybody can, okay, so we'll just.
Uh, it's not gonna impact the high school, but the middle school principal.
The middle school, okay.
Yeah.
So, let's bring, if we can get them all here, ask them questions and see what they think.
Absolutely, the curriculum directors will also be here.
Bring them all.
Those would be good folks to ask as well.
That's good, I wanna ask them questions, okay, thank you.
Okay. My turn. Okay. When I got my principal license, and this was in the early two thousands, they made me go and take the state teacher test, the literacy portion. And one of the things in that literacy portion was a writing sample. And it was, you know, very MCAS-ish. I did this in two thousand, I was working in Madison Park at the time. And I, I took the test at English High School. And I'm sitting there, and I'm looking at this, and this thing looks so much like an MCAS long comp question, the thing that teachers were asked to, to, to write. And, and I was handicapped in this, in that the way I normally write is on a keyboard electronically. The way I edit is I move words around and play with it. I do not write a first draft. I do not then transcribe an edited first dra, uh, draft into a test booklet. I don't do that, that's not the way I write. It hasn't been the way I've written for fifteen, twenty years. And, and that's what we're asking kids to do right now with this long comp. It is ridiculous. It is not the way people write, it does not reflect the way people write. Doing writing on a paper and pencil test in this paradigm is, I, I think it's just an obsolete instrument and it's pure foolishness to expect people to write in a manner that they don't normally write in. So, I, I see this paper and pencil testing thing is totally obsolete. It, it's, it's just done. It's nineteen fifty's technology. The biggest beneficiary of the MCAS right now is UPS, who's making a ton of money tracking paper, taking big cartons of paper, delivering them to schools, having test coordinators, and I've done this job and I hate it, unpacking these boxes, counting test booklets, putting test booklets aside, being responsible for tracking these. And this poor person in the back of the room from the middle school, you have to do that? God, God bless you.
For twelve hundred students.
Twelve hundred student school twice during the year, not counting the access, which is the third one, tracking every last booklet, and then the MCAS police knocking on your door if the person who's receiving the package counts one less test booklet than they think that you had. So, this is a huge honking administrative nightmare to ship a lot of paper around, it's not very green. A lot of carbon being wasted, a lot of UPS drivers employed. And it, it, it makes no sense, it's obsolete, it's not the way to go. Obviously, as we're moving towards an electronic test, a computer-based test, we're not there yet. And one of the things that, that the Park Consortium found was Massachusetts was woefully unprepared for the technology compared to the other Park states. Because the state is inadequately funding or taking seriously the deployment of technology into the schools. And that, that's a real problem that everybody's all anxious about. But our biggest school with the biggest test burden, twelve hundred kids, and the person who handles the testing is saying, "The electronic went pretty well, but the paper and pencil was an absolute bloody nightmare." And you're nodding, would you come up to the mic, please? Stop nodding and help me out here. As the test coordinator, the Odyssean, would you care to weigh in on the, uh, on your opinion versus doing a paper MCAS or a, an electronic Park?
It's not, it's not as, as simple as a yes or no. But I feel that with preparation, the, the Park would probably be most beneficial for the adults and the students. I find, you know, the man hours that go into the administration of, you know, the test materials, which you just so eloquently described, is, is time-consuming for the guidance counselors, the administrators, all the others that are taken away from, you know, the, the students and other things that they should, really should be doing. But it does, it takes a village to, to get these tests ready, to be distributed to the different grades. I think in watching the students taking the actual test, and when you're the test administrator, you actually, you, you have a control computer, and we see each student, how they're progressing and going through the questions. You kind of have an, an oversight on that in case someone accidentally exits too quickly. As Dr. Chesson said, they're not done forever, you can go back and restart them. So, administratively, that's nice, too. And I, I think from what I saw, the students, I, there were special education students that were tested. They didn't, I didn't hear of any real issue with the time constraints on them. As far as the students who actually took the test in the rooms that I was in, I think maybe we had one out of six different classes. I think we had one student who struggled with the time constraint, but that was something that he struggled with all the time. It wasn't something new because of the test.
And, and if, and if it times out electronically, you're not looking at five pages that have unanswered questions. The thing just stops giving you questions.
Right, yeah. So, you know, the students, I think, liked for the written portions, they liked the, for those students who write and then they have to go back and erase and rewrite, the editing portions were nice for them. There are hover overs, and there's a lot of technical features that are really nice. And same for the math, a lot of the math tools, while they will need some explanation and a tutorial, they, the students seemed to use them with ease. The, you know, the, the rulers and all the other things that are provided for them for the math portion. So, like anything, I think there's a little, even adult anxiety about this, about, you know, pulling it all off together. But I think that, you know, with preparation, that it's something that we, we could do successfully.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You know, um, first of all, the issue of accountability, yeah, we do look at the accountability because we view it as a lever to move things that we're concerned about. And we were, we were concerned earlier on about the persistent lag in growth scores at the middle school. And that has gone away because we've paid attention to it. That is not the desired outcome, it's merely an indicator. We've aligned our curriculum, we've done coaching, we've done all the things to make teaching and learning better, and the test scores follow. So, if you teach children well, if you have high-performing classrooms, the test scores will follow. I've got a district full of results where if I've got a strong principal, good coaching, good teaching, we do well. Where that falls apart is where we're falling apart. And that's sort of the signal it's sending to us. We're not looking at individual teachers as being a challenge in this district. We have a district full of excellent teachers. When we look at this, we're looking for alignment in systems. So, that the teachers should never feel pressured from the school committee about testing results. We're using this as an indicator of how the systems are aligning, how our curriculum is aligning, to see if we programmatically need to make changes in the way we're doing business, allocating resources, putting in new curriculum. That, that's sort of a, an indicator for us in terms of policy. And from every indication we've seen, we'll get the accountability scores before, uh, before the December tenth meeting, I believe. From every indication, just looking at the scores that we've gotten in the past, we've done it very, very well this year. And we're gonna be very pleased with the results. But I do want, I, as a researcher and somebody who works in this, I want to see for myself the accountability numbers, how they align to schools that were Park, Park paper, Park, Park electronic, and MCAS. And I have a host of jobalike folks who I end up talking to, and I have that opportunity to have that conversation. So, my mind is not made up, but I want it made clear what my inclinations are. Is that the key decision in my mind is that we need to move as quickly as possible into the twenty-first century so that our testing is more authentic. Kids are better at computers than the adults. The adult anxiety over the computers and computerized testing, I understand. From what I've also seen in the data that we've getting and talking to testing coordinators, assessment directors, and accountability people throughout the state, is that while somewhat more challenging in some of the urban districts, the kids have really taken to the electronic version. The middle school had a positive experience in terms of administering it electronically. The electronic version that's gonna be coming down the line is going to be more Park-like than MCAS-like. The consortium, and, and, and I will also say that the problem that we've had with the consortium is that the consortium has withheld data and has not done things in a Massachusetts manner. We have a very competent group of psychometricians and testing folks who work in Malden, who do a very good job of presenting results to us. Massachusetts has more disclosure than other states. I've talked to my colleagues in New York where they're not used to getting this qua, the quality of data we have. And that one of the reasons why we wanna break out of Park and do it on our own is the quality of the reporting and the flexibility in the administration we have. And I think that going to MCAS two oh with Park-ish questions and using the consortium as a source of a question bank will allow Massachusetts people to go and have a conversation about the test, to look at the results, to look at the question, to see where it's working and where it's not, and make decisions without having to get a whole, a dozen states to line up and agree with us. I, I, I think that it's a reasonable approach. We are not a district in trouble in any way and fashion. So, I'm not particularly worried about hold harmless. Though, if we're doing well, we've got two more years of doing well, and I think we're doing well. So, side on seed, I take this year's results and hold on to them for another two years and let everybody have two years where, where we're not really looking at the results as a, uh, in, in an accountability way, that we're looking at results, tracking the major change of transitioning to computer-based testing. That's how I'm, I'm looking at it right now. If, if I see reasonable results and valid accountability measures coming out of Park districts, and I haven't seen that yet, I'm inclined to go toward Park. And the reason why is that I want us to do as much electronic computer-based testing as possible, as early as possible. I don't, if, if the decision were to go MCAS paper to Park paper, I'd stay put. Because I don't see any future in Park paper either. I want us to do this electronically. I want us to do an electronic-based test, which is more authentic to the things that we are doing in the classroom and what we're aspiring to. We're aspiring to more electronic-based curriculum. We're, we're aspiring to one-on-one situations. We're aspiring to do the technology. And I want our assessment to align to our aspirations, not to what we were doing in nineteen ninety-nine. So, that's my consideration in this. I want us going electronic in as many schools as possible. And if I have to do it using Park versus MCAS, I'll do the Park questions to do it electronically. And, and, and that's my bias now. Now, obviously, there's data that's out. I haven't seen our accountability data, I haven't seen anybody else's accountability data. That's a really big validity measure for me. If the, if the accountability data in other districts is coming in screwy, and a lot of districts are being, are, are holding on to the hold harmless to avoid a big drop, then I've gotta think about it a little differently. If the Park schools that have done it electronically are reflecting where they really are, and, and folks who are working with that in the buildings think it's going well, that's gonna influence my decision. Lot, lot, lot of data, a lot of evidence that I need to make an informed decision simply isn't on the table yet. But make no mistake about it, my priority is to get out of the shipping paper business, to get out of the long comp business with the pre-draft and the writing and, and paper and handwriting, to getting to something more authentic, getting something more that is a twenty-first century instrument, and being able to use the computer as a tool with the manipulatives of the computer to get a better sense of how children are doing. Let's see what happens over the next month. But I, if, if I had to vote tonight, I'd be pushing us to go as electronic as possible. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hayner?
I'd just like, if we could get a report back, a, a state of readiness currently on our technology to implement this test. And if we're not a hundred percent there, how much it will cost and a timeline for acquiring that?
Absolutely. I can have that for the next meeting. And if there's anything else that the committee would like ahead of time, I'll make sure that you get it before the next meeting.
Yeah, we've got two meetings to hash this out, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of people talking to us about this.
Thank you.
It's a big deal, it really is. It really is. Electronic signatures for vendor warrants on the agenda. What's come across our electronic table, we're doing this electronically, email, right? Email list from the MAS C indicated that we are now legally able to do vendor warrants electronically, rather than having to go to Karen's office and sign them, or rather than having the paper in front of us in a meeting. That would be a tremendous advantage, particularly in the summer months when we need to get warrants approved. The reason why I put this on the agenda is I'd like somebody to move to refer this topic to the appropriate subcommittee, which would be Policies and Procedures. So a motion by Mr. Thielman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion on the topic?
That's great.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is now dispatched to Policies and Procedures.
Mr. Hayner, would it be appropriate to table the next item on, for the next meeting because of the time?
No, because our next meeting is going to be even more packed.
The reason, the only reason I said that is because the report has been done.
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
Yeah, we have a lot to say.
Yeah, we have, we have people with stuff to say.
She's left.
Okay.
Last, I was going to ask her if she minded if it was tabled.
Oh, okay.
But she's doing the first, I mean...
I'd like to get this discussion out front.
I think we're going to, you know, we don't meet again until December 10.
Fine. I just...
And we've got principals coming in, we're doing budget, we've got more Park, we've got...
I'm not moving the titty clock.
No, we can get this done.
Let's go.
Okay. Foundation Budget Review Commission final report. Dr. Allison Ampe, Ms. Hanson.
Can't go past 10.
Oh, you can't.
But 10, 10, last row.
Do you want me to just introduce?
Oh, including our...
I'm sorry.
So, we brought this to you because we had written the letter back in whenever, April, June, whatever it was, to the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which was studying a revision of the Chapter 70 formula and all the costs of education in Massachusetts. And they have now put forth their report, and we had thought it would be nice to just do a quick review of what the report says, and then some issues that we found with the report. And Ms. Hanson's going to walk us through the report, and then I'll bring up the issues and what we can expect for money, because I like money, except that it's not actually funded yet, so it's only wishful money. Yes, hypothetical money, but... So just real quickly, but...
Well, maybe you could work on, you know what, this happened before, because the other presentation is...
You can sing.
I can just...
No.
No. See, the thing is, is the school department is far more advanced in technology than selectmen are. That's pretty obvious.
That is an arm machine.
It is, but they set up in here is hard.
All right. Well, I'm just going to start talking through this. You can, you have, do you have it?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have it on...
Electronically.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's, that's okay. All right, so just really, really quickly, a quick overdue. The mission of the Foundation Budget Review Commission was established in that by 15 state budget, and the purpose was to determine the educational programs and services necessary to achieve the Commonwealth's educational goals. It was the 20-year...
Microphone.
Oh, speaking to the microphone. At the same time. So the 20-year update since the 1993 Ed Reform Act, to review the way foundation budgets are calculated and make recommendations for potential changes, determine the educational programs and services necessary to prepare students to achieve passing scores on the MCAS, or whatever assessment the state deems appropriate, and determine the recommended measures to promote the adoption of ways in which resources can be most effectively utilized, and consider the most effective and efficient resource allocation. So the new considerations that have really come up in the last 20 years had to do with field and research community that suggests that we need to reconsider the adequacy of the budget that was the foundation budget that was passed in 1993 to better meet the needs of the 21st century. And then there was the whole question of the achievement gap, and the fact that what we've done really well is quantify the achievement gap over the last 20 years and rethink the foundation budget in terms of what does it really take to get all students up to the proficiency level that we're looking for. And then the moral and fiscal focus, again, just about getting everybody up to meeting those same standards. These were the four major factors that were considered. Health insurance, the cost of health insurance, special education-related costs, ELL-related costs and outcomes, and low-income related costs and incomes. So I just have one slide on each, in each area. For health insurance, the findings were that the district spending on employee benefits and fixed charges exceeded the budget allotment by more than 140%, and the budget did not include retiree health insurance. So the recommendations were to adjust to the average GIC rate, add retiree health insurance, and have a separate health insurance inflation adjustment factor. In the area of special education, the findings were that the percentage of students receiving special education was not the 15% predicted in the original report, but it was closer to 16% on average, and that out-of-district special education costs exceeded foundation budget 59%, by 59% using the FY13 figures. So the recommendation, and there are some special calculations going on there, but was to assume that the in-district special education enrollment should increase from 3.75% to 4.0% for non-vocational students, and increase from 4.75% to 5% for vocational students, and to increase the out-of-district special education cost rate to capture the total costs that districts bear before the circuit breaker is triggered. So, again, to increase costs to make up for the fact that the actual costs were exceeding what was predicted by the original foundation budget. Yes, please plug it in, yes.
Yeah.
In the area of English language learners, the finding was that national literature shows that the weights for states with funding formulas varied greatly, but in general, Massachusetts was within the range. At the high school level, students with interrupted education, the SIF, and limited and interrupted formal education, the SLIF, which we're all learning about now through our retail classes, that these students had huge deficits, especially at the high school level, and very short amount of time to make them up. So the recommendation was to convert the ELL increase from a base rate to an increment on the base rate, apply the increment to vocational school students as well, which did not happen in the past, and to increase the increment for all grade levels to the middle school level, which was kind of in the middle there. For low-income students, again, what the literature said was that weightings are all over the place, but in general, Massachusetts was within the range. And, but this is an area where I think they did additional research and really looked at the best practices for moving these populations forward in terms of student achievement, with the thinking that some additional funds in this area might be tied to specific research-based practices that show improvements. So the recommendations here was that to increase the increments for districts with high concentrations of low-income students, and ensure any new definition of economically disadvantaged student counts properly and accurately reflect the actual population, leave the exact calculation up to legislative action, and require districts to post online how they would use those funds. And these were some of the successful practices that were identified, particularly with low-income students and students with English as a second language, extending the school day or year, focusing on wraparound services, social and emotional needs, instructional improvements for teachers in particular, increased professional development time, increased common planning time, and the use of instructional teams and coaches, targeted class size reductions for the highest-need populations, and early education, so full-day kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Allison Ampe now, who dug in right there. To some of the issues with the report.
Yeah, so I took a look at the actual numbers that were in the report and the numbers that were in the documents that they used to build the report. And so the first one, and I just want to point them out because I think we should all know this, it's not talked about at all. So the first one was a problem with the calculation of how they reached in-district special education numbers. They claim 4% total FTE in the recommended increasing the assumption from 15 to 16% of students receiving 25% services 25% of the time. However, the actual numbers that they showed showed 5.7 total FTEs. They never discussed a discrepancy. That's a big gap. So in my opinion, the numbers suggest that they're going to be underestimating the in-district special education. The second was looking at the calculation of out-of-district special education. The report reads, "Out-of-district special education enrollment is assumed at 1% of foundation enrollment, which mirrors the rate of out-of-district special education placements statewide. However, the numbers in the presentation cited in the former in-district special education presentation show that out-of-district enrollment is actually 1.33% of foundation budget, foundation enrollment, sorry, that's a mistuck, which is 33% higher than the assumption." Which, again, that's a really big number when you're multiplying that by really big numbers. And that leads to problems with the numbers. When they calculated this out-of-district special education spending, the report says districts spend far more on special education tuition for out-of-district placements than what's allocated. In FY13, actual costs were 59% higher than foundation budget rate of 25,454. What they were talking there is the actual per pupil costs were 59% higher. However, if you look at the whole lump of spending that people did, that was 155% higher than what foundation budget estimated. So I think, again, they kind of slipped some stuff under the wool, and so it's going to lead to continued undercalculations of what the actual needs are. Linda and I looked at the report with an eye of, did they actually hear our concerns? A lot of the things were mentioned. What was not mentioned was the special education having higher than average, so higher than the 1% statewide, distribution of out-of-district students, and also the wage adjustment factor. Then we looked at how much money Arlington could hope to get if these things were actually funded. The projections, if the formula, new formula was used, using a Desi spreadsheet from June or so that had estimates on special education and healthcare changes, and not knowing how they did this exactly, because all we have is the numbers, we don't have the formula. It suggests that additional Chapter 70 money required to meet new foundation budgets for Arlington would be 3 million, almost $3.5 million. It's great. I made estimates of additional funding for ELL by subtracting what the extra that we get now and adding in the extras they're suggesting. I came up with a total ahead of $110,000. It's unclear whether the low-income increment would apply to us because we're not a high-concentration district, so I didn't add anything else. The total addition, I just lumped it all as Chapter 70, it ends up being $3.6 million a year. There would be an increase in the town's required spending to meet the new foundation budget number of almost $800,000. However, we already pay, we already spend greatly in excess of what our requirement is, so we wouldn't see any actual need to spend more money. What wasn't funded was having higher-than-average special education out-of-district placements, and that is unknown, but that could be a number that runs into the millions. And again, I don't know how they did their numbers, so I'm not sure if anything was counted. And then the wage adjustment factor inequities that we see here in Arlington is greater than $1.3 million. So again, that's unfortunate that that was not counted. And then this was just the thoughts and next steps. We wondered if people wanted to talk about where to go from here.
Um...
Stand up or sit?
Well, you can go back to your own seat. You have a mic.
Or we can talk about it in another meeting.
Well, we can talk about it in another meeting. You know, I ran my own set of numbers on this, and I'm coming a little closer to 4 million in terms of an increase in the foundation budget, but there were things that were vague in the report that you couldn't actually plug into, into the current foundation budget formula. The other thing is, is that they talked about how the foundation budget formula has been under-inflated over the past few years, and in fact skipped a cycle so that there'd be an overall adjustment for the entire state based on the deficiencies in inflating the existing budget. So I think that, you know, you're right, that it is a report on the shelf, and I think that one of the things we need to do is to work with other school committees in MAS C in order to pressure the legislature in terms of fully funding the foundation budget as it would entail providing inadequate education. Now, the other factor in here is that for districts who are spending at foundation, you know, this isn't a hypothetical exercise. The required local contribution going up is substantive on top of the Chapter 78. So what I think you might have here is not just a report on the shelf, but you've got evidence that could be brought forward to resuscitate the school funding case. Hancock v. Driscoll being the most recent, which hasn't been closed out, as additional evidence to prompt the Supreme Judicial, Supreme Judicial Court to intervene and mandate that the legislature go and acts. And in '93, when we got into Ed Reform, the legislature acted to set up this foundation budget system because they were being pressured by the McDuffie case. So perhaps encouraging those at foundation from, for pressing the legal initiative, maybe even helping in some way, as well as pressuring our legislators to fully and adequately fund what a true foundation budget is, should probably be our action steps. Any discussion on this matter?
So how do we do that?
Well, we can talk about that later if we want, but that's sort of, you know, the action plan, and maybe we go to community relations or somehow carve out some time or call Mr. Garbely, Mr. Rogers, and Mr. Donnelly in, and we can have a conversation about this report with our legislators. That might be a way to do it.
That's what I was going to say. I was going to suggest that, just the chair, see when they're free, and have them come in to talk about this, because I'm, the report came out, the legislative session ended, the FY17, they meet again in 2017, so what is the plan? And, you know, to fund this is going to take an increase in revenue. So what's going to be the conversation about that?
Mr. Hayner?
There's been some talk and that phase in of 25%, 25%. But as I shared that with one of my colleagues here, by the time you get to the fourth year, we're behind the ball again.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, 2016, 2017, I'm thinking of fiscal. So I mean, I think, I mean, I think, we should have a conversation with them here. I think it'd be good for the community to know, because this reporter's been out there, a lot of people have talked about it. If the legislative delegation came, which they always like to come, we can just see where they're at and what the reality is. I think we need to get a reality check. What's going to happen, and what can the school committee do? Because I'm not sure what, how to advocate and what to advocate for.
Right.
So is it a sense of this committee that we'd like to invite our legislators into one of our meetings? Okay, and we will do that. Any other discussion on this?
In the new year, after...
In the new year, in January. Maybe try for our first meeting in January, providing that's not a legislate, that's not a date.
Many thanks to Linda and Kersey for doing this.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent presentation. Ms. Hanson?
So I just really wanted to briefly say that was really the whole purpose of bringing it back before you. The committee reported out, but then it just seemed to, like, there was a little splash and then it fizzled, and we were like, no, wait a minute, this is really huge, we really need to get on this. It took years to actually get this Foundation Budget Review Commission passed as part of, you know, an effort to go forward. So I think the idea is to really run with it now and meet with legislators. And I do want to say, though, Dr. Allison Ampe really was the main motivator behind this originally, so she's done a lot of the heavy lifting on the numbers, and it's great that she did that. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent work. Thank you. If we can turn off the projector and... If we can turn off the projector and either get the superintendent a pair of sunglasses or...
Actually, just, can you just close the light there, because I need the computer later.
Okay, yeah, we, we just don't want the superintendent to be in the...
Does anyone need the projector?
Yes, I do.
Catherine needs it.
Are we projecting again later tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's nine oh two.
The chair and get it open.
Well, we don't need to move the ten o'clock, we've got time.
No, we are going to move, we're going to be done by ten o'clock.
No moving the ten o'clock.
In your dreams.
That's what I said.
Unless Mr. Hayner issue, starts a filibuster.
Not in open session.
I would add, that was a great work. I had started to prepare something, but I, I would have to say that you did just a superb job of summarizing some of these important issues with respect to the foundation budget, which haven't been looked at in a long time. Just a couple of quick things while we get this set up. You already heard about the elevator. We're, get, get comfortable in these seats, and we'll have to get some other people a little bit softer seats or bring some chair pads in.
No problem, I can tell.
No problem. Looks like we'll, the next two meetings will probably still be here.
Can't put my legs anywhere, but it's just great.
It's just great.
Just great.
You're the male Ute.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's a reason I'm being treated like this, I don't know why, but I'm going to think that's...
I think it was whoever got here last got the wood chair.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
If you had an update on Hardy, but just, just to reiterate it, I'm going to send a note out to Hardy parents. It takes about eight to twelve weeks to get the parts once ordered, so our understanding is they're going to be here mid-December, so this will eventually get fixed, as will the elevator get fixed. All right. My superintendent's report this evening is really actually on the budget, because we've been working on some very important analysis and thinking about the FY seventeen budget. We have begun the process with administrators, as I mentioned before, of looking at what is important that we need to be doing next year in the way of materials, personnel, and of course, is the issue of enrollment growth. And that has become an enormous factor in terms of our budgeting. And now that we are beginning this next phase of looking at what Arlington is going to do about enrollment growth, I don't think that we can have the two, being the, the look at space, decoupled from what's going on with our operating budget in the outlying years. And as you know, we have, we have presented to you multi-year look at our budget with all the assumptions that we've had in the past, and we're doing the same thing here with a, with a lens looking at the enrollment growth and the effect on our budget, because it's going, it is having, going to have a significant effect, and it's something that we need to be talking about at long-range planning and in the months ahead, because the, the two very much are related to each other. How, have, you're all set on that? All right. So, one of the things that we've been looking at is what is, what has the, the school district actually been spending related to enrollment growth? And I'm going to turn this over to Diane Johnson, who you all know, and take a look, we're going to take a look at it through a couple of different lenses.
Good evening. This first document that is up is one of our attempts to try to capture the instructional uptick in spending related to enrollment growth. So, what you see are FY thirteen through sixteen, you see on the far left here, there's a pointer, yeah? Okay, over here, and then the total teacher FTE. So, I take the total salary divided by FTE to come up with an average teacher salary. And as you see, the teacher's salary has increased over time. This is the change in FTE from the prior year, and so what I've done is I've taken that change, FTE, multiplied it by the average teacher's salary for that year, to come up with an additional salary cost by FTE. We've also included these three factors to try to capture some of the typical costs of increasing our teaching staff. Fifteen thousand dollars for curriculum supplies, one thousand dollars for a new computer, and five hundred for professional development, and these are just rounded numbers to try to get us in the ballpark. All in, that creates the cost all the way out here to the right. If you bring it down here, these are the same numbers carried down here for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. FY fifteen was the first year we realized any impact from the enrollment growth factor, additional funding given to us by the town, and that actually represents two years of enrollment growth. So, we're looking at an overall, and, and this is just teachers. You know, there's no administrators, there's nothing like that, this is pure teachers. You could see that we've increased our spending on teachers about four point six million dollars, of which we've received one point four million dollars in additional funding, thus eating the differential. And this doesn't set us up for great stuff, as you will see. I think I'm going to start with this model, because it's totally shocking. This, this is pretending there will, there will not be a single more student after this year, that seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we have no more children, we don't lose any, we don't gain any, which we obviously know is false. It does show the enrollment growth factor, using the current formula as agreed with the town, because it always lags a year behind, so this represents the students we added in FY sixteen being paid out in seventeen, but from that point onward, there are no increases. The revenue numbers, all for seventeen are adjusted, I've removed the kindergarten grant, I've, I've rolled Title I back to FY fifteen levels, because we saw a really significant uptick in sixteen that I don't think we can trust, so I want to take it back to fifteen to be prudent. And I've also put in the differential, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars decrease in our circuit breaker funding because of our better cost containment of special ed expenditures, we do realize less reimbursement in circuit breaker. So, that's our total revenue picture for seventeen. This is our total expense picture for seventeen, assuming all contract obligations met, and two percent growth in every other area, which may or may not be sufficient, but at least it's a starting point. And that brings us out with the tiniest of stuff to handle everything. But, in this magical world where we have no more students, you know, maybe. So, now we have to go look at something a little more realistic. This, this document here shows a ratio between our existing student population and our existing teacher population at each of the three levels, elementary, middle, and high. Once this ratio is created, it's multiplied by the enrollment in the out-years to create an FTE needed. Now, I hasten to say that this should in no way be taken to be believed as, as completely adequate to our educational needs. This is a mathematical way to tread water with our, with our FTEs. It doesn't mean that the people are in the right place, or where the student growth is, or meet the needs, or all of that. This is just, I really think of it as treading water. This keeps our nose just above the waves. But, it is a way to convert the enrollment growth into money to fold it into a long-range plan. This is what I used last year, and these numbers are based on my, on my mathematical projection. And that, in, down here, when we see the FTE growth, it's multiplied both by the average teacher's salary for FY sixteen, and also by the other elements we discussed, curriculum, materials, computer, and professional development, to give us money. And then we fold that in to the multi-year plan. I have restored the law, the enrollment growth factor from the town based on the numbers and the twenty-five percent reimbursement rate. All the other revenue things remain the same, and we've added in the expense for teacher's salary, and the additional supplies for new classrooms. And that puts us six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in potential deficit for FY seventeen, which is pretty much the cost of the teachers. Now, it was requested that we look at Dr. McKibbin's numbers. So, I redid the, the teacher calculation, the teacher, student-teacher ratio calculation using Dr. McKibbin's numbers. I did not overwrite FY sixteen, his numbers differed from our actuals. I simply took our actuals and then took his numbers as were in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And then I folded that into the same analysis, and as you see, that is a, an even less attractive picture, with a deficit of about a million dollars in FY seventeen. So, can I answer any questions so far?
Dr. Seuss?
So, when I look at McKibbin's numbers, the thing that jumps out at me is that, at the high school, we're projecting a slight decrease in student population. So, to be consistent, we say, okay, we should decrease the staff, but of course, we're not going to do that, given that that's a one-year drop, right? I mean, we, we want those teachers, we're not firing them and then rehiring them the next year, so, so in that way, it's...
This, this is the, the nose above the waves.
No, I, I, I know that we're just doing...
This is just math. This is, this is not best practice, this is not what we need, this is just math.
Yeah. But that just struck out, struck me.
Go ahead.
One of the things that we can think about is approaching the Long Range Planning Committee meeting, which coincidentally meets on Monday, to discuss the amount of enrollment growth factor and the formula for calculating that. When we originally proposed this a few years ago, I believe our initial ask was for fifty percent of per pupil, and they gave us twenty-five, which is certainly better than zero. But, when we look at, the only year for, for which we have actual per pupil numbers from the state, it's thirteen oh eighty-five right now for FY fourteen, per pupil publications always lag several years behind. And we look at the total number of students added in that year, I took it out, I took it out of this analysis, I apologize, I shouldn't have. It works out that the one point one nine increase is actually sixty-eight percent of our per pupil cost. So, even the fifty percent that we initially asked for is a little conservative. Unfortunately, we don't have the per pupils for the fif, for fifteen and sixteen, but I think there is, based on that alone, I think there's some grounding on the idea that adding these new students is running us well in excess of twenty-five percent of per pupil costs. Now, I think we should reasonably expect that in FY fifteen, our per pupil will go up, and so that whatever percentage we agree to this year will be based on the FY fourteen number of thirteen oh eighty-five, and then it can, you know, I think our, I think our number will be higher in fifteen, but that's another whole year away. So, I haven't, in any of these analyses, calculated a different percentage yet, but, you know, all of these are predicated, all of these views, all of these views are predicated on the twenty-five percent reimbursement. But even at fifty, we would double these numbers, and it would certainly help.
So, let me, let me ask a question here. When the enrollment goes up, the foundation budget goes up. When the foundation budget goes up, Chapter Seventy goes up. When, when the foundation budget goes up, the minimum local contribution goes up. So, by not taking into consideration at all the, the enrollment growth, if that were at zero, all the additional Chapter Seventy money that was generated by the increased number of students, and all the increased required spending generated by that would fall into a town-side pot, be held in, in reserve and not go for the education of the additional children. Is that your understanding?
The way the long-range plan works is that all revenue from the state goes into the town, and then it's reallocated out to all the departments, according to the formula that's agreed upon.
So, that the, the money, the additional money that's generated above and beyond the plan, because that was based on a fixed number of students, which would have had a fixed trajectory of Chapter Seventy money, the increase in the Chapter Seventy above and beyond the normal increase, the one that's generated by the additional students, with the intent of the state that that money would be going for the purpose of additional, educating additional students, instead of finding its way to, to students, if, if it was at a zero, would be falling into the town reserves instead.
I, I agree with that.
So, how much in here have we calculated out would be increased required spending locally and increase Chapter Seventy, based on the enrollment?
I haven't addressed that at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
But that certainly is a, an interesting question going forward. I understand that we're, we just started doing these calculations in the past couple of days, but that, we, we certainly don't want the increased money that's coming from the state, because we have additional students, not to be spent on the additional students.
I think what plays against us in this, and I, I agree with everything you've said, but what plays against us is that we're a comparatively wealthy district, and so the amount of our per pupil that's directly funded by Chapter Seventy is relatively small. And I'm not at all sure that they're not already making good with the twenty-five percent of per pupil that they're giving us. In fact, I believe they are.
Because the Chapter Seventy is less than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
But then there's the additional seventy-five percent of the required spending, that, that the town would be required to contribute in light of the increased enrollment.
Correct, but they're already, there's, there's no danger there, they're already well in excess of what's required.
So, what, but, but what would, but what it does is the net impact is reducing our per pupil spending, because the town is above the, the zero level, the minimum level required, that now that they'd be in a position to, it's really pulling back funding on a per pupil basis, because instead of the money, the additional money coming from the town to meet the needs, the additional stu, students is being held by the town.
The long-range plan giveth and the long-range plan taketh away.
Do we have any new streets in town that the town has to maintain?
No, I'd like some.
Well, you know, this is definitely part of the conversation that we have to have with the Long Range Planning Committee.
And, that's the purpose of looking at this. Where this is coming up, we have the task force that's going to be starting their discussions on the thirtieth, and we really needed to take, take a, a good look at this. This is the first go at it, but it's important that everyone see this. I've, I've had numerous conversations with our town manager over the last couple of days, as we've been talking about this, and I've asked him if he would be willing for the Long Range Planning Meeting to, to do a couple of versions of the plan, if we change the percent of contribution for enrollment growth, say, to forty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent. We know that in fourteen, we were actually at sixty-eight percent, and while there's some money, there's some in the, to be, you know, perfectly candid about this, there are some positions that are not related, directly related to enrollment. But I have to say, when we were actually going through them, there are very, very few. They are all related to some form of enrollment growth, because even when you increase a classroom at an elementary school, it's not just that teacher, there's other, there are other costs as well, whether they're in extra liaison support, OTPT, art, music, phys ed, so it's not, it's simplistic to think about it as just one classroom. So, anyway, that, he has, he said that he would do that. In our, in our FY fourteen, we looked at this number, and it's the only one that's really can be accurate, which was a hundred and forty-seven students, by the way. The only one that could be accurate, because that's the only year we have the per pupil cost.
I want a question.
Uh, Mr. Thielman?
So, that, the projection you had up on the screen before, with the...
With my projected growth.
Yeah, with projected growth. That allows for an increase in staffing to enrollment?
Nose above the waves. It's mathematically generates...
Mathematically, right, correct, correct.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, okay, so that's what I meant. It mathematically generates staffing to enrollment, nose above the waves, I got it. It doesn't account for any additional things we'd like to do, like the additional coaches that we had talked about earlier, it means we can't do any of that stuff.
Correct.
And even when we do additional staffing above the waves, we have a deficit.
Well, yes, and I would also suspect that we will see class sizes go up.
Yeah, yeah.
That students never, never allocate themselves evenly.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, yeah, right.
Damn.
Those crazy kids here. Those crazy kids.
It's a parent's fault.
It is. It's our fault.
But, you know, my numbers here, you know, and again, just to reiterate, my projection merely takes the past and pushes it forward. Dr. McKibben's numbers are a little more dire-looking.
A lot more dire.
His are, well, yes. But his start to tail back, whereas mine never will. Mine are always going to follow the line until they spend several years in a different direction, and then they'll follow a new line. So, you know, whether you're looking at his or mine, you know, there's definitely work we need to do with town to figure out how we're going to manage FY17.
Dr. Seuss.
So first, can you remind the committee how much per pupil spending we're talking about 25% of or 50% of?
It's the FY14 published number, which is 13085.
13085, okay. And then the document before that, this one? No, actually, sorry. Just this, this one, the total increased cost of direct educational staffing?
Yeah.
So those numbers, so say, like FY16, which is just a single year rather than a double year, the 1161, is that based on, that is based on...
That's based on the 169.
169 additional students, is that right, or?
Uh, we had 85, 84, 85 this year.
It's based on last year's, right? Or, so that's what I want to get clear on.
This number is based on FY15 growth. It always lags a year behind.
Right, which is, I think, 169.
169 and...
So the, so the 80, the 80-some-odd that we have for this year translates into the 274 here.
Right, right, much lower, okay. And then, so then, last question, just a clarification. So the 1161981 is the amount that if we applied the formula that you're applying in the future, had we applied that in the past? So, sorry, so that number is, how many teachers did we need to maintain the ratio times the average cost of the teacher, is that right?
No, that is incorrect.
It's not, okay, that's...
What this is, is the number of teachers we added...
Yep.
...times the average teacher cost.
Okay, and that's what the 1161.
Plus...
Okay, plus these other expenses.
Plus those other expenses. It is not related to maintaining the ratios. The ratios are just away from when we convert students to dollars.
Got it. So is the actual number of teachers we added, then with these formulas that are estimates? Okay, or, you know, means or something? Okay, great, thanks.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Looking at the same sheet, the teacher total salaries, are those actuals or are those calculated?
Nope, those are actuals. That is, that is the real deal.
These are the real, even the FY16, because the numbers matched up, like, amazingly. If you add up the FY, if you go to this sheet and add up the numbers of teachers for FY16, it's exactly, oh, I guess that's because that's what you should be...
Well, it should be.
Sorry, no, 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 but do we have, don't we have another, in our budget, we should have a count of how many teachers we have?
Yes.
How does that differ from the teacher FTE here? Because that's a calculated teacher FTE, right?
No, that is our actual, that is, this is the actual count of teachers.
The actual number of teachers.
Actual, this is what we did.
The salary is, but...
No, no, the FTEs are what we did as well.
But that's not the number of teachers FTEs.
Right, but the, so the teacher FTE column is also the same?
It is, it is what it is. It is actuals.
Okay.
And it is not the budgeted actuals, it is the actual actuals.
Right, no, I'm just, because your calculated actuals is exactly the same, even to the .9.
Yeah.
Which, I'm just surprised. Modeling doesn't usually work as nicely as that. It's not on this sheet, it's on the other sheet. Or, yeah, yeah, it's on that one.
Well, it should. I mean, FY16 should line up perfectly across all these formats, if I've done my work right.
It's very nice for modeling.
Those are our models, those are our actuals.
Yes, they're not models, they're actuals.
They're not models, they're actuals.
16 is the real deal.
Oh, okay, so those aren't the numbers...
16 should be exact.
Those aren't the numbers for the multiplication of...
No.
Okay, so even though it's in that column, it's not those?
No, these are, these are our actual numbers this year. And I use them to create the ratio.
I didn't understand that.
That's okay. You're scaring me, though. You were like, they're matched, well, yeah.
No, but that's...
It's good.
Okay.
And obviously, this, these are the teachers who we're actually able to hire and put in place. We've got places where we've got class size issues, where we didn't hire a teacher for whatever reason, and we should have. So these numbers are lower than what we really intend to do. And we are losing level of service to the children over the past couple of years, because class sizes are increasing.
Yes.
In certain places, right?
In certain places.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, is my understanding, when we sat down and did a fiscal stability plan, the underlying basis of this was that maintaining level of service, and that we're going to maintain library hours, we're going to maintain police officers, we're going to maintain the fire department and current staffing levels, we're going to provide the same level of services through the fiscal stability plan that we had when we entered into it and did the override. And that was one of the selling points. We went to the town, if you vote for this, we will maintain the level of services that we're providing. And if we're not adjusting to the increased student enrollment, we're not keeping our commitment to the taxpayers to maintain a level of service. So the adjustment is really necessary in order to fulfill the commitment to the taxpayers that we would maintain services at the level that existed when we voted the last override.
I agree. Just to bring to your attention, as was discussed in the last long-range planning, FY17 assumes a three-and-a-quarter increase and a three in every subsequent year, though at the initial phase of the override vote, it was a three-and-a-half. So that's just another point to bear in mind.
Yeah. Mr. Heiner.
Is there any thought from the committee and the administration, that number's coming down, that the increase in enrollment factor go up? It won't equate, but I mean, if we're going to lose money on coming back, going down to three, down to three over a period of time, and we have, having, I think we all agree, we're going to have an increase. The numbers may not be exact. And the formula that we're getting from the town to deal with that additional enrollment, maybe that should go up a little bit, too, to offset it a little. Just something, I don't know, I'm asking consensus from the committee and asking to go forward with that. We may not get it.
That's the point, that's the point of this.
That's the point, yeah.
Yeah, that's the whole point.
We're talking that.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'd actually ask, first, is there any way we can make guesstimates on the per pupil cost for FY15 or 16? Can't we just use 13,000 or something?
No, I think it's going to be higher.
Okay, but I'm saying, can we do something to come up with some idea of what fraction those numbers are? It seems like we should be able to come up with a per pupil, you know, even if we're lowballing it. But where I'm trying to go with this is, I think we need to suggest that the town manager model is something higher than 60%. If our first and only number that we have a handle on is at 68%, we need to have something that's at least in that ballpark. I would like us to try and get the ballparks for the other two numbers.
It's not possible. I mean...
But the per pupil cost hasn't changed that much per year. You know, it's gone up. It's varied by, it changes a little bit, but it doesn't change by magnitudes of thousands and thousands.
Right. I mean, not long ago, it was just below $13,000.
Right.
Like, five years ago, it was just, you know, $12,850, you know? I mean, it doesn't seem to go up rapidly.
But if we're not keeping up with the increase in enrollment, those numbers are going to go down relative to, you know?
That's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
I just, I feel uncomfortable trying to make a per pupil number.
Okay, I hear you. Any other...
I'm not saying it's for project, for saying that this is the factor that needs to be used, but if we are suggesting a range of factors, it will, you know, if it's coming out at 90%, I'd like to know, you know, even if it's an estimate and it's not total confidence, I would like to know that, and that would affect whether I would tell the manager, you know, model 70 and 80% or something. So I just, I can't do it off the top of my head, looking at this now, but it seems like it's possible. So, that's all.
Ms. Starks.
So I feel like one of the things that I, you know, it's kind of funny, because in some ways, this is all a shell game. It doesn't really matter whether the money is, the schools need 8% a year, or 3% plus this weird enrollment factor.
Yeah.
I feel like what we really need to do is say, can we just reopen the conversation about the real needs of the schools? And, you know, I just feel like it's kind of weird, is like, you know, they keep, you know, there's this kindergarten factor, and there's the enrollment growth, and there's your 3%, and there's this. And I'm just like, okay, can we just come up with a true, and not to say, and I apologize, I don't have, like, a way to fix it or, sorry.
Talking to the mother.
But, you know, I just feel like when we, when we, when we talk to them, what we really need to do is say, listen, you know, now that we've really got a handle on this, can we sit down and really come up with a realistic formula and build some of this in? I mean, I think that we're all willing to say that it's okay if it goes up and down with enrollment or costs or whatever, but I mean that, you know, that there really is, obviously, you know, because I feel like we have this little percent that we get, which they slowly chip away at, and so then we constantly, like, you know, like the duct tape at the high school, just holding it together by, you know, and I just feel like, you know, come on, guys, you know, it's, but, I mean, costs are going up, and, you know, especially now with all the technology stuff, which was never part of the budget, you know, so.
I do have to say that the capital planning committee has been fairly generous with us the last two years in supporting, you know, our computer rollout. So I don't want to...
Oh, no, no.
I don't want to appeal ungrateful to the significant sums of money they've given us on that, on that event. Is it enough? No.
Right.
But they've given us some real good whack of money, and I don't want it to seem like...
Yeah, right, right, right. No, 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 I mean, we have to say thank you, but at the same time, explain that it's not enough to live on.
I think we need to have some sort of percentage, just in terms of normal growth of expenses, plus an enrollment factor, because that's really what's driving all the conversation. If we were steady at 3, 3.5% with the sped factor, everything would be fine, we'd be able to maintain services. But the dramatic increase in enrollment we're experiencing is, is going to take a toll on what we're able to do if that's not factored into the formula. And I think it's reasonable. I don't think, if our enrollment was going down and our need was less, I'm sure that the finance committee come and say, you know, you've got a couple hundred less kids, you should tighten your belt to reflect that.
Actually, isn't that, that's part of the deal.
Mr. Thielman.
So I, you know, I think we have, you know, we have an enrollment challenge, which is causing us to have this whole discussion about a space plan, a facilities plan. And we also have kind of shown tonight, we've shown tonight, that we have an operating budget challenge because of the increase in enrollment. So we also have to have a conversation about a multi-year plan to have enough revenue to meet our needs over the next several years. So two conversations need to be taken place in terms of long-term planning, facilities and operational needs, two things.
And simultaneously.
Yes, they do.
It would be the heartbreak of the world to bond classroom additions and have them stand empty.
And then you're going to have deficits.
Right.
Because this is a cumulative deficit, your number is $4 million.
Yes.
So that's requires a plan.
Kathy wants to say something.
Superintendent.
Well, if it's the committee's wish, I can talk to the town manager about doing perhaps another, increasing those percentage models. But I just wanted to add another comment, and that I've also been, I have met with parents, and I know you have heard from parents...
Oh, yeah.
...that the class-size numbers, certainly in some schools and in some grade levels, are reaching what Arlington would consider unacceptable levels. So it's, we are educating our children well, but I think people are having a vision of what we could even do better. And so it's, this is a perfect time to have all of this basically talked about. And that's what the purpose of doing, moving forward with this, is to get the full picture of what we're looking at going forward, and not just simply the space issues.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
As we talk about trying to connect the conversations about increased enrollment, increasing facilities, it brings up that this model, as I understand it, is only talking about teachers.
Yes.
And when we, especially when we start talking about opening facilities, we have a whole bunch of other people that we're going to need to be adding in if we're opening something. And so I, again, can't tell you how to model that now, but I'm concerned that right now, if, that we need to be aware of that and thinking about it, and that that's going to end up being a big upchuck in, uptick in, yeah, sorry.
Pointy sleuth.
Yes. In spending and need, and that we can't forget about that in looking at just the teachers.
Yes, this is, this is a narrow, narrow lens to look at, just teachers, because obviously, a school needs far more than just teachers. Teachers are core. They're right in front of the kids. They're the most visible piece. They're the most important piece, without a doubt, but they can't function in the absence of all the other supports that are part of a district. And, you know, I...
Yeah.
Needed to start there.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, certainly as we expand space, and certainly as we expand all of this, as we continue to grow, you know, it would be extremely naive to assume that our existing administrative infrastructure could absorb all of this.
Right.
Yeah, it's counselors, you know...
Across the board.
Yeah, X.
Okay, very quickly, let's, yeah, Mr. Heiner.
Question for the superintendent, unrelated to this, so I'll, if this...
Unrelated?
Let's finish this.
Yeah.
Let's finish this, and we'll resume the superintendent's report. Are any other questions or comments on this excellent presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Vogel.
I have nothing else to bring up to say.
Mr. Heiner.
The other night, it just struck me at permanent town building committee, when we were talking about Stratton and everything, way back when we talked about you or somebody coming and talking to us about the type of modular units that we're going to get for our input. And so where are we on the time? I know we're coming up to a potential town meeting, so...
We, we're going to be putting the bids out fairly soon for the modular, for the modular piece. I think that part of it is pretty much ready to go. And we can, in terms of, what I'm saying, ready to go in terms of the specs of them...
I need that computer.
You want to have somebody from a modular company coming?
No. Well, that was way back when we were talking. What I, I thought we were going to have some discussion, potential input, before the specs were done.
Well, they're not really completely done. What type of...
Okay, let me put it up. I know how many rooms we're going to have, rooms, and I saw an outline of a configuration. I'm talking about heating, I'm talking about air conditioning, I'm talking about the actual physical plant. It's more than just four Wall Street classroom. I didn't know, questions like, are there going to be bookcases? Are there going to be closets? Where are the kids' coats going to go, and things of that nature?
Okay, there's not going to be closets. There might be some bookcases, and the, and the kids' clothing will go in the classroom.
Okay, the heat, the heating, are there individual controls for heating and AC?
Yes.
So...
We are going to do AC. That is an option, but we are going to have AC.
There is going to be AC.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get a report on this at some point?
Can we?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking for. No, you're right, you're right.
If we had a report or if we need to refer to facilities...
Facilities. We can, we can have a complete report for the December 10th meeting.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, it's not really a consent agenda, because there's one item, so motion to approve the warrant 16059 dated 11/12/2015, and the amount of $80,942.64 moved by. Uh, Dr. Seuss seconded by Ms. Starks, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Policies and procedures.
Speaking for Mr. Pierce, um, we bring to you from the Policy and Procedure Committee the first reading of BEDB, which is Agenda Format and Preparation and Dissemination, it's been revised, um, the committees will, the full committees will have been to, for us to look at it and to determine if, when we thought that committee members should be receiving materials, um, just a second, let me pull it up. This was brought as a first read to get input from the rest of you, and then we'll go back and revise it, we've already heard from Ms. Fitzgerald, who had some suggestions, which we will incorporate, for example, she said that the administrative assistant would need to receive materials by ten AM on Friday, so that she would have time to upload them into Novus, um, but if anyone has any comments on what we're thinking, they can get it to us before we meet again, and I, do we have a, another meeting scheduled yet? I don't remember.
Uh, no, we don't.
Any...
Yeah, one other thing I'd like you to look at is the time that we release all the supplementary materials, because the selectmen do it, um, ahead of time, and I think that we should, we should adopt that, so that no later than...
Right.
That Tuesday where we've got that second wave of presentation materials, we should be opening everything up, and if we can incorporate that into the policy, because right now the policy states that we open the supplemental materials at, at the time the meeting starts, and if we expect...
To the public.
To open to the public, because if, if we ha- have access to it, nobody else does, you know, they're, they're sitting there guessing what this agenda item is about, and I don't think it's really reasonable.
Yes. And, I actually, I think we need to have more conversation with Ms. Fitzgerald as to, can things be, can, you have essentially a draft agenda open in Novus, and then it can become finalized.
Yes.
And I just, not, not now, we'll come talk to you and find out what the options are, um, because I think that's part of what we're trying to suggest, and I, I'm wondering if that's possible in Novus, so, um, okay.
I should, I, I think if Mrs. Gerald could come to a meeting, that would be helpful, or just have, have a quick conversation, that would be great.
Okay, any other comments on this policy before it goes back to policies and procedures? Mr. Sprague is smiling, uh, thank you, um, budget.
Okay, budget, budget, um, okay, budget, sorry, I'm juggling too many things here.
Do an update, so you can have problems. I know, I guess I will bring my computer over.
Budget, what, okay. Um, budget met this week, and we discussed at the Reclassified Administration, the new rental fee structure for the Pierce Field, at our meeting on the third, we had heard a preliminary version, comments, we also heard comments, questions about legality in the cost to youth sports, um, we sought advice in between our meetings from Town Council, and also had some further discussions with Ms. Neville about, um, how to reconfigure the rates, and, Dr. Bodie, did you want to present the, um, the final sheet, I mean, what was done?
It should be in your packet there, in Novus.
Reference material, agenda format prep, no, that's the only thing that's in there.
Yeah, we don't...
That's the only thing.
Um, okay, so...
It's not in there?
No. I don't know if it's in Novus, I didn't look in Novus.
What?
Not online.
That's not online.
Well, there's, not quite sure what, we're, we're not sure what happened, but at any rate, I'm, I apologize if it's not in there, because we had it, they're ready to go, um, let me just give a, a little bit of a, a little contextual piece on this. As you all know, the town has, uh, invested about a half a million dollars in a new turf field, which was desperately needed, and now that we have that turf field, we want to make sure that that is well maintained.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there were things that probably should have been done, that, that, we, we got a long life out of the last one, no doubt about it, but, um, there were probably things we could have done along the way to have made it even, uh, hold up a little, maybe not longer, but certainly been better conditioned during that period of time for the users of it. Approximately slightly over fifty percent of the time, the high school athletic teams use Pierce Field, so we've been looking at, you know, what, what are we going to do in terms of maintaining that field, what will be the essential costs that have gone, that are necessary to have, have it be something that we're going to have for a long time, particularly with all the other costs that this town is facing, it's, it's really absolutely important that we, we, we spend, uh, this effort to do that. So this summer, we, we did some preliminary look at what the, what all of the different budget items would be, that would be necessary, there, it, one of them has to do with just the maintenance of the field, it's a seven thousand dollar a year contract to fluff up the field.
Mm-hmm.
I know, it's a, it's actually a special, a special machine that comes in to do it, then every year there's a, a cost of, for lines of sixty-five hundred. One of the things that there is just, uh, huge consensus on is that we need somebody there when we have users, um, non-high school users, to be monitoring the field in just terms of usage and take, taking care of it, there's also, also ancillary things with the field, such as the press box and, and different equipment that is used, and, and used by users, concession stand bathrooms and so forth, so, what we're proposing to do is to have, uh, field monitors in place when we have users that are not high school, and when we have high school users, we have coaches, that are there watching, ma-, watching over everything. There's also equipment maintenance, there's a lot of things, um, such as press, the scoreboard, we've had to replace the scoreboard in the past, which is not inexpensive, and then the controls for the scoreboard, there's a number of things that are required, and we figure the annual maintenance on that would be around twenty-five hundred, and then there's also equipment replacement that, that needs to be built in. Also custodial detail, how we're thinking about custodial detail is to have it staggered over events, so that it's not concurrent, but at this, but might be halfway through the event, and then after, so we can have the, the cleanup. We now have DPW, uh, picking up the trash, but that's not a free service, it's something that we compensate DPW for. There's also going to be the need for some administrative costs in coordinating, uh, the schedules with the monitors, and just doing all of the, making sure all the maintenance is maintained on the field, um, and then there's supplies, there's custodial supplies in terms of toilet paper, and paper towels, and cleaning materials, and that has been costed out, so, that has been costed out, I'm sorry you don't have this in front of you, but it's been costed out around fifty-one thousand, of which, we're taking away from that amount of money, the things that the high school would be, um, responsible for because of their usage, and through this process of, of, of looking at our costs, seeing what, seeing how we can keep them as reduced as much as possible, and we, we've been before the Budget Subcommittee, and they gave us some great suggestions, we also this summer met with users, and continue to involve users in this process, so that they, they, um, they can give us feedback, and in fact, the feedback they gave us this summer resulted in the numbers that we eventually went to budget with would now have been more refined. So the, at the end of this process, what we're, um, proposing, and this is considered a first read tonight, I'm not expecting any kind of decision.
Zero read.
Yeah, we're not reading it, yeah.
All right, so it'll be, it'll be a zero read, we'll have, we'll get those documents, they're, they're there, and I, we have a Xerox machine, we could, we don't have to use the Xerox machine here, okay. We would be looking at changing some of the fees, um, currently, none of our, none of our, um, youth groups pay anything, haven't been paying anything over the years, and really after doing some sharp pencils, sharp, sharpening our pencils on this, the proposal would be that, that the youth groups would now be paying thirty-five dollars an hour, and if you added lights, which would be, we've costed out to be approximately fifty dollars an hour, their per hour with lights would be eighty-five, um, we've increased some of the other costs for other groups to meet the costs, our intention in this is not to make any money, this is not in any way, shape, or form, a revenue enhancer, this is really simply to maintain the field. So, um, what we were hoping to be able to do is to, um, get approval down the road, and as I said, well, this is probably, obviously now, just the first introduction to this in some ways for the whole committee, um, so that we can put on a trial basis these fees in place for the spring, and youth groups and, and other groups need to have some notification, which I think probably by January would be sufficient, and we'll, we'll track very closely what our costs are, and are very happy to adjust these costs, um, so that next year in the fall, we have, you know, perhaps, perhaps they can come down even more, and maybe even as we go through it, there could be some adjustments at the end of the season, because again, our intention is not to make money on this, but to make sure that we have everything in place as necessary for, um, well-maintained field.
Hmm.
So, I'm sorry you don't have the materials, we'll get them to you, and we'll come back to this on December tenth, but you'll have those tomorrow.
The, the Budget Subcommittee was, was ready to approve the new rental fees, as you will see, um, for use during a trial, we were suggesting a trial period of approximately six months, and then the numbers can be revisited, um, and see if it shakes out, okay, but we'll do that next meeting.
We'll present it next time.
Yeah.
Facilities.
All right, so, and we met right before this meeting, um, and my goal was just to...
Oh, there's one over there.
I'll talk here first. Um, our goal was really to make sure that we have all the documentation, and that we are prepared for the meeting of the School Enrollment Task Force, um, and, uh, so what, um, so we made a list of documents, like, you know, we think that everybody should get these documents that we had, which are the, you know, numbers basically of where everything is, what the classrooms are, but, um, I will continue this, the next microphone, uh, I felt that the problem with those numbers, um, is that they don't really show where the impact is, it's really hard, you have to put it all together, and I wanted there to be some kind of a document that kind of showed you visually, so, um, so this is what we did, now, I have to, I also have to preface this with the fact that, um, these, the colors are mine, they are not Dr. Bodie's, um, they do not reflect what we know is going to happen, so what I did was, I entered in the spreadsheet, um, the current classroom sizes, so that those are just numbers of students in every classroom, so if you start at Bishop, um, and then what I did, my own personal thing here, um, is that it's red if I feel like those are unacceptable class sizes, and they should be broken up into fewer classes, they are yellow if I feel like they should be on a watch, like, that they're getting dangerously close to being broken up, and they are blank if, in fact, the class sizes are pretty okay, and they actually have some grow room there for a couple of kids. My, my goal was to make sure that when we go into the meeting, the larger meeting, that we can tell them, these are the schools that are level one, they are on fire, they need help this year, and we have a list also of what our level two schools are, like, they're getting dangerously close, they don't need anything this year, but they are going to need it the year after, and then probably level three schools, which are pretty okay, so, um, and this is just the elementary schools, obviously, um, as you can see, Pierce and Stratton are the only two in the green, green means they're good, they're go, they got more than enough class sizes, um...
Adequate class sizes.
Adequate class sizes, and adequate classes in the school to hold the classes that we need. In the yellow, so kind of in the next level up is Bracket, um, but you can see that it's actually, by my estimation, Bishop and Thompson are really the two that are going to, are exploding, Bishop because it has just horrendous class sizes right now, which I feel like we should fix, Thompson, which we know, not only because, uh, we have this problem where kindergartens are growing at four classes a year, and we're popping them off only at two a year, so it's kind of got a double-edged sword, um, and that really Bracket, Dallin, and Hardy are, Dallin and Hardy are up next, um, they're really close, depending on how many incoming kindergarteners, they might be okay, they might be in the yellow, um, at least for the next year, but I feel like one of the things that we need to make sure when we go into this kind of town-wide meeting is to really make it clear where the stressors are, and I felt like I wanted to have some kind of a visual on that. Now, whether or not we all agree with kind of which classes should be broken up or not, I feel like is, you know, I can, I, I'm going to leave that in there for colors and for the sake of the discussion, um, but I feel like one of the things that I am hearing a lot from parents, uh, currently, um, and not just at Dallin or any particular school, but kind of across the board, is that our elementary class sizes are too big, that they think twenty-five is too big, um, you know, and anything over that is absolutely too big, and so, um, I considered that when I went through, red to me meant, you know, that the classes were just way too big, um, in those schools, so, um, I don't know, this is just, I was just trying to make sure that we could have some way that we went in there, I think that, so not only do they need the background material, which is what I used to create this, but some understanding from us as to which schools are clearly, um, level one, like, we absolutely have to do them, just so that we know where we're headed with this discussion, um, so I just wanted to share that, and take any feedback on that from people.
Great job. Comments, hearing them, Dr. Seuss?
Oh, just a question, um, do you have different numbers for what you think is red for kindergarten level than you do for fifth grade, because it, it seems to me that that feels different, right, a class of twenty...
Uh, I didn't touch the fifth grades, because they're leaving.
Right, okay, right.
So, knowing that, there's no fixing them.
Yeah.
Because all these fixes will happen next year, so in my mind, where I could, I thought we should mitigate, now, none of, all of the red here is not currently in the budget.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, that's...
And the space is not there.
Right, 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 so...
We don't have the teachers, we don't have the class.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, 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 so this is just a, you know, if I'm also going to start, while we're thinking about budget and the enrollment problem, we also need to think about the fact that we have to stop just continuously shoving more students into the same number of classes, um, so we have the big trifecta going on, but, um, I feel like this, I mean, I, I noticed when we were looking at the, you know, when we last got these numbers, that I started to like, circle where class sizes were too big, and, and everything twenty-five and above, and, and I feel like some of this is what I felt like was missing in the McKibben report, like, he, he did raw numbers in his own way, but he wasn't looking at, then also what we think the class size should be, and I know that that's a discussion that I am continuing to push, um, and trying to figure out what the right class size is, and how we define that, but, um, this is kind of...
It is ten o'clock, I want to know the, uh, will of the committee.
Move the ten o'clock rule?
I think, I second.
To ten-thirty.
Okay, motion by Ms. Starks, second by Dr. Seuss, to move the ten o'clock rule to ten-thirty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's a unanimous but unhappy vote.
I'd just like to take note that the prior chair never had to do that.
That's because the prior chair didn't have to worry about the prior chair's filibustering.
Oh, my goodness. After you talk tonight? Please, please.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Bill.
Not often, but we are tonight.
So, but I do want to make sure, if anybody has any, you know, input or feedback, um, let me know, uh, you know, I just feel like we certainly, as we head into that meeting, which it looks like is now going to be, what, this, it's November thirtieth?
Yes.
Which is a Monday, I don't think we have a place yet, did they say where?
I mentioned it tonight, I think we're going to be in the conference room.
Oh, okay, they, they didn't tell us that, but it is at seven o'clock on Monday, November thirtieth, will be the first meeting of the School Enrollment Task Force.
Um, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'm just looking at this with an eye to pain for it, and while I really wish we could achieve everything you're suggesting we need to achieve, I'm concerned that the funds are not currently in our budget as it is so created, and I am worried that we'll be setting up unrealistic, you know, just going in and saying, oh, we're going to do this, is going to set up unrealistic expectations with parents, and, and I'm just, I'm concerned about this.
Oh, I, I didn't mean it as any way, shape, or form that, it's mostly to show where the enrollment growth is pushing the edges of the schools, so in this way, even without the numbers, I think what I did was just tried to say, okay, it's Thompson and Bishop that are under the most pressure, and then we can see where it goes from there, um, whether we do this or not, but I feel like you need to see, it's hard to see just from looking... hard to see just from looking at numbers, why, why we, the school committee, think that, you know, if you look at this, well, Bishop is okay, they've got, you know, an extra classroom, they're using eighteen classrooms, why is that a problem? I'm like, well, because there's way too many kids in each one of those classrooms. So, I just wanted to, you know, it doesn't make any promises or any kind of, it's what I'd love to have happen, but I know that it's not in the budget and that it's not there.
We're making two separate arguments here, and this is the other half of it.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Heiner.
I'm set, thank you.
Oh, I just wanna quickly say...
Dr. Seuss.
I was with, I was at the Bishop PTO last night, and I think what I got very clearly from them is that they felt a little left out, because when you looked at McKibben's, hey, they don't look like they're getting worse, but they're not getting better.
Yeah.
And their numbers are already unacceptably high.
They are.
So, I, I'm glad that you're drawing attention to that, as we also draw attention to all of our other needs in the district.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, District Accountability, Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
No report.
Community Relations.
We met on the 16th, we did a second read of the survey summary, it's going to go for a third read at our next meeting. We also discussed two public meetings. One on the enrollment challenges, tentatively for January 7th, with a snow date of the 13th. This will be a town hall meeting that may or may not perfectly be called a charrette, but this kind of like big community-wide meeting, visioning meeting. We also discussed sort of starting a process of having public conversations about issues that are important to the district. First one, tentatively to happen, end of March, early April, on curriculum assessments, Common Core. We think these are things that, that people want to have a conversation about, and we wanna help facilitate that.
Thank you. Executive session, minute review.
I am attending a meeting with town council, I wanna share with him what we, we'd like him to do. As soon as I've done that, I will contact our secretary and set up that review.
War on committee.
Everybody get paid again.
School Enrollment Task Force is gonna meet...
Gonna meet on the 30th of November.
Okay.
Seven p.m.
We've now come to the end of the regular agenda, we now approach, yeah.
Quick announcement.
Oh, announcements, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Ampe and I attended the Edco meeting the other day for school committee, I'll just, the topics, one heavily discussed was park, and the second one was starting time at schools, and...
High schools.
High schools.
And high schools. The, the other announcement I'd like to share with the, at the last meeting, I talked about the Thompson third grade doing the town meeting. They did it, they had four articles presented, three failed and one passed.
Oh. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, executive session, motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions, preparation for negotiations with union and or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, or to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, well, this doesn't apply. So, for the first item is the executive session, motion by Dr. Seuss, seconded by Mr. Heiner, roll call. Dr. Allison Ampe, Mr. Thielman, Dr. Seuss, the chair votes aye. Ms. Starks, Mr. Heiner.
Aye.
It is unanimous vote, six-nothing. Thank you for everyone for coming out tonight and watching us in this beautiful room.
We're not returning.
We are.
We are not returning to a public session.
Oh, no, I get, yeah.
For, for anybody who is concerned with that.